Okay, we're about to get started. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, you'll need to fill out a public input card, they're in the back of the room, and then take them to the city clerk. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's the Urbana City Council for Monday, May 20, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members, Brown?
Here.
Hazen? Percy? Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? We will take public input after I do one proclamation. And this is National Public Works Week, so I'll ask Public Works interim director Carol Mitten and Assistant to the Director Barb Steele to come up.
Don't have the microphone today, but this is a proclamation. Whereas, public works services providing our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives designed to protect and safeguard all aspects of our environment. And whereas, public works projects, facilities, services, and infrastructure are vital to the city of Urbana's continued growth and economic success, supporting job creation and development in transportation, education, public safety, sustainability, and other sectors that are essential to building livable neighborhoods and communities. And whereas, such facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from the city of Urbana, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, plant, and maintain the transportation of urban forests, fleet, sewers, and waste and recycling systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas, the community recognizes the contributions of dedicated public works professionals and extends sincere appreciation for their commitment to excellence in their efforts to improve and enhance the health, safety, welfare, and prosperity of those in the city of Urbana. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolf Marlin, Mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim in the week of May 19th through 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week. In the city of Urbana, I call upon all citizens and civic organizations who acquaint themselves with the issues involved through providing public work services, and to recognize the contributions that public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not only in the city of Urbana, but here. Given under my hand and seal of the city of Urbana this 20th day of May, 2019. And I would just send a note out to the public when you see our friends in their bright green vests and their hard hats, working on our streets, fixing our lights, stuff, and say thank you. It's a hard job, and we do it every day. Without many thanks, don't march to stand up. Thank you.
If you wish to address the city council. Oh, we need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion for approval? So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Are there any corrections? Will the clerk please call the -- all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Okay, we've done the proclamation. We have several cards. We have a really packed agenda tonight, so I would ask those speaking to the council, if you're speaking on the same subject, please, please keep your comments to the point and try not to repeat too many times what other people have said, but we do appreciate your input. So first up is Patricia Avery. She wishes to talk about truce and step. And you have up to five minutes. Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Patricia Avery, and I'm the executive director of the Champagne-Urbana Area Project. I am here tonight to talk about CUAP's C-S-S-F, truce and step proposals. I would like to talk more about our truce program because Pastor Carruthers, who is the founder of the STEP program, is here tonight, and he will, he will address that program. In our truce proposal, we have asked for funding to train and staff three new peace seekers, violence interrupters, also known as PVIs, that will cover the city of Urbana. I'll give you a little bit of background on how truce came to be, and then I will talk about why we seek financial support from you, for, from you, for additional PVIs. As a survivor of gun violence, I pay close attention to the rise in gun violence in our communities of Champagne-Urbana. I began to become alarmed in CU about the upward trend in violent crimes back in 2013. That's when I decided I could no longer sit on the sidelines and do nothing. I began to do my research, and I came across Ceasefire. Ceasefire is an evidence-based, public health model that seeks to do three things: interrupt the transmission of violence on the front end, work with the highest at risk of committing crimes, and work to change community norms around gun violence. As you might imagine, it took a lot of public education, working with stakeholders, and a tremendous amount of determination between 2013 and 2017 before CUAP would receive funding to implement truce from the Champagne County Mental Health Board. Truce is a violence prevention initiative that is modeled after Ceasefire. At the time I was looking at Ceasefire Chicago, it was showing measurable success, reducing gun violence in some of the toughest communities in that city. I need and wanted to know what they were doing. Surely if they could reduce violence in Chicago, we could do so here. So my focus and my goal became, how do I get trained on how to implement a program like that in CU? I then contacted Mr. Ceasefire Executive Director, Mr. T.O. Hardeman, to see if he would be willing to come to CU. He was, and he did. Mr. Hardeman came to Champagne-Urbana on several occasions to conduct trainings, facilitate peace summits, and two peace marches. Truce meets, the program goes, by specialized PVIs outreach work. Our PVIs' goal is to stop the spread of violence by mediating potential violent conflicts before a shooting occurs. Getting on the front end of violence is what our PVIs do. They build trusting relationships which can include advocacy, mentoring, and tutoring. We are out here trying to keep people alive and stop potential shooters from spending the rest of their lives in jail. You will hear from two of our PVIs, Josh Payne and Joby Taylor, about their work momentarily. It's been a real tough week, very tough. We just buried our youngest homicide victim, 14-year-old Elijah Booker, on Saturday. It's really still hard for me to imagine and talk about it. And last year, a 15-year-old Urbana youth was shot and paralyzed from gun violence. And just this past weekend, there was three shooting incidents, and two happened here in Urbana, right down the street, and just a feet away from the schools. There were four different shell casings found, so that means that there were multiple guns with multiple rounds fired, which ultimately sent one individual to the hospital with non-life threatening gunshot wounds to his arm. The gunshot violence has reached epidemic proportions in Champagne County. This, there is just too much pain and suffering going on with our families who have lost their loved ones to gun violence. The gun violence must stop. When I look into the eyes of these mothers, and I've looked into many of these mothers' eyes, and to the young people who have friends, it's going to take all of us working together to reduce the violence in our communities. The first homicide last year of Martell Taylor happened here in Urbana. Although Martez Taylor was shot in Urbana, he had an address in Champagne. When shootings occur, they don't care about what side of Wright Street they're on. Gun violence does not discriminate, and we, as we know, bullets don't hit their intended targets. Just ask me, who lost my mom to a stray bullet, or the Urbana family members of Desiree DeArman-Austin, who would just turn 27 on her birthday on March 25th. I am here because our proposal, we have asked for funds to train three new PVIs who are from Urbana, who come from neighborhoods in Urbana, and we need these individuals that can do the work in Urbana to help save lives and keep potential shooters from spending the rest of their lives in jail. It will take specialized training to do this work. It is required that our PVIs go through a 40-hour training, but we need the funds to get them adequately trained. We know you are final decision makers. We are asking that the council review our proposals, and if you have any questions to contact me, my information is on the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Josh Payne. And you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is my first time speaking before the council, so I just want to say hello to you all. My name is Josh Payne. I am the outreach manager of a gun, anti-gun violence organization, as Ms. Patricia was just alluding to, called Truce. So I just came here today to speak a little bit to the work I do with Truce. And also, if you guys just saw me just throw this shirt on, we also do partner with STEP Tutoring. I do do a lot of Saturdays and Monday nights at Dublin Street Church of Christ, doing tutoring with Pastor Carruthers and his wife, who is in the back with a partnered initiative that we've been working through, kind of building through the Champagne Coalition. But since it's in Urbana, and we're dealing with a lot of stuff right around Douglas on that borderline, we've seen a good mix of both Urbana and Champagne people, programs, and community residents coming out. So if I could just speak to that. First of all, I want to say hello to Ms. Hershey. I want to thank her for her work that she's done with me already. I want to give a positive report to this council board. A young lady was expelled this past October from Urbana Middle School. It was a very traumatic incident for the family because of the situations around the expel, expulsion that took place left the family in disarray as they felt they, they were mishandled in that situation. Pastor Carruthers immediately aided to that family and put some support around them, and reached out to Joby Taylor and myself to come and meet, also with Maurice Hayes, to try to devise some plans on how to structure around it to uncure the trauma that this family was experiencing. Through delegations and conversations, I began to take a lead as an advocacy partner with the mother, through her permission, and with pastor. Through the last six months, I've been partnering with her mother, trying to bring her to, to step parenting conferences and meetings, get her kids out more involved, out of the shell of what they've been experiencing since they've been expelled and experiencing a little bit of backlash from the community in that. The only thing that the little girl asked to do was to be able to walk the stage with the rest of her, rest of her classmates since May 30th is their graduation, and she has had straight A's since she's entered into Ready. I just want to thank again Ms. Hershey for her work, as I spoke with somebody in the office today at the middle school, and she will be walking on May 30th via Mr. Weemel. So we thank God for STEP. Also, since I only have two minutes left, I just want to speak to some of the violence that's been occurring in Urbana as well. That's what the last three years in my work with Ms. Avery, I have been working with CUAP and getting training in restorative justice and violence mediation and retaliation, violence prevention measures that Ms. Patricia and CUAP has invested out of their own pockets to send me and bring people here to train me. Through those situations and working with my partner and colleague, Joby Taylor, we and Maurice Hayes put a team, along with CU Trauma Resiliency, other advocacy, and mentoring programs, with the boys who were all expelled from their Urbana, from the February 4th fight. In that, I ended up taking on two short-term mentoring roles with the 11 boys that were expelled. Since I've been, one of the mothers was going to be here tonight. I hope to get her here next week because I hope to be here more often to let you know about the work that we're doing. But one of the boys who was actually named the victim in that report, since I've been working with him, he has had no more issues with police. He was, we were able to help him get a job on campus that he has not missed a day of work since, and he has been meeting with his homebound teacher every week with no problems. I've been able to have phone contact and face-to-face contact with this young man, her mother, and then their other cousin, who was also involved in the incident and expelled as well. And I can faithfully report that if STEP Tutoring wasn't there, that if Truce wasn't there, the mother could come speak for herself more than me, that she doesn't know where her son would be or where her head, where his head would be. So I say that to say that in the times that I've been working with STEP on Saturdays, we've been trying to have it open every Saturday, but some structural and obviously financial issues, we've been doing it more like getting, we've been having some issues with that, but when we do have it open, I've been able to have connections with some of the kids that are there. And I want to tell you that violence is very prevalent on the Champagne and Urbana side of Dublin Street, where his church is, that there's no programs, there's no mentors, there's no role models for these kids, let alone the academic powerhouse that we've put together of Illini Tutoring, joining with the already teachers that are coming in from pastors' church, to put education as the, as the prowess and the priority, but to build relationships, to create a structured environment where these kids have no structures. Most of them don't have fathers in the home. Most of them are already being exposed to guns at 10 and 11 years old, are talking to me, saying, "You're the anti-gun violence manager? Well, I know da-da-da-da-da." And I, and I'm urging this council to consider that there are 10 and 11 and 12-year-old boys and girls who I desire to continue to be able to have a relationship with, to deter them from potentially becoming victims of violence or becoming one doing the violence themselves. But if there's not a STEP Tutoring program there right in the heart of this violence, then, then I fear what could happen if people like myself and Joby are not there to be with them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. For your first time speaking, you did a magnificent job. Next up is Joby Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
How you guys doing? You know, I don't know many of you, but I know, I know few of you. But just a little history about truce. I ain't going to be lonely. I don't need five minutes. I just want to say that we've been very active in Urbana Middle School and High School. We had a proposal that was in place where we were going to put together a program that was going to be geared around mentoring these young men and young women at the school. Some stuff shifted. I don't know what happened, but it ended up, you know, being pushed to the side, but we, like Josh said, we were still active in ways through STEP, through truce, through community outreach stuff that we do, to where we, where we were still able to interact and be positive role models for these kids at the school. We're asking that you support us in that effort, to continue to support us in that effort. We do a lot here. I go through the neighborhoods here. I know a lot of the young folks here, and, you know, I do a lot of networking with them, so they, you know, they trust me. It's about building relationships with these young folks and getting them to trust you, and they know that they can rely on you and they can count on you. And when they have somebody behind them that they know that they can trust, they tend to do better. So I just urge you guys to support the program. You know, we need you guys over here in Urbana because Urbana, it has been shootings over here. I think just last night, it was some shootings out here, like four shootings. So, you know, we need to put the, put the boots on the ground over here, and, you know, let's get the work done over here.
Thank you, Joby. Linda Turnbull?
I'm pretty sure you know me. I'm Linda Turnbull. Hello, Mayor.
Hello, Linda.
And everybody in the city council. I'm here for a reason. For, first, I want to give a moment, moment of silence for all the people who've been shot and killed with gun violence. Okay, now, I'm going to get to the real reason. I had a sister killed with gun violence in front of her kids. I had a nephew, five years, killed with gun violence. Anything that comes up with gun violence, I take it very serious, and people need to support anything and everybody that's want to help out with gun violence. These young men, I ride around all the time. I see them rolling into the streets. They're not enough. They need more than just them. Because we got Urbana and Champagne, we got all these kids out here with the gun violence, and I'm at the schools. I do subbing, and I tell you, it's off the chain. And I say off the chain is, they need more help, more support, they need more of them. They can't do everybody. We need more of them. And when you see them trying to reach out and do the work, you need to put the time in and put money in to help help them, because we can't do it just with just them. It takes many people. Even though I register 5,000 people, I still couldn't reach no 5,000 gun people, because those people need people like them. They know about, they have a history about people that had guns, and some people don't have the heart to go in the middle of the city like these two are, because they're afraid. They're afraid of the people with the guns. So we need more of them out here working these streets, because we're having people killed every day, not here, but everywhere around, killed with guns. We got people that we need to reach out and support any organization that wants to help with gun violence. That's what we need to put in money into. We need to put money into other things, too. But gun violence in Champagne, I lived here mostly my life. It's never been like this before. It's scary. People are moving. They don't know what to do, and most of the people won't even talk to you about it. They can see a person shot and won't even say who did it. But if you get people like them coming in and merging with them and talking with them, getting a relationship with them, they might tell somebody where one of the guns at, or something like that. Because I was in Garden Hills one time when people got shot. A guy walked up to me, and he knew me from walking in the community. He said, "You know that garden, that car over there? It's full of guns." That's information. I gave that information to the police. You got to have people work in this neighborhood that the guys can talk to, they feel comfortable with. They see a police officer, they ain't going to talk to them. They'll talk to them before they talk to them. You know what I'm saying? So I'm saying to you guys is, I know the money that the city has is probably not a whole bunch. Whatever you have, you need to put it into this program, because this program is doing work out here. I see this young man here riding the streets all the time, but I know he can ride every street. Hallelujah. So my thing of it is that we have to work together. You know what I say? It takes a village to raise a family. It'd take all of us joining together to help out. We can't wait and let some people start working on a program and then don't let them keep working on it and don't feed into it. We got to feed into it. Now, if we need to find funds other ways, we need to get out there, because I'll go door to door and knock and say, "Can you give me $5? Can you give me a dollar?" So, just to give it to them, because that's how strong I feel about gun violence. I don't want to take up all your time, but I'm saying that because I was 18, and my sister was shot with a sawed-off shotgun in front of her kids. My nephew was shot five years ago. They don't even have the person that done it. He was a good guy. You know, even if it was good or bad, he had a life, he had a family, and this is a serious issue. And that's all I want to say, because it's, it comes close to me when we talk about it, and I don't want to get sensitive and start crying. So right now, I'm just going to say, you guys, please consider it, okay?
Thank you. Next up is Pastor Courtney Carruthers. Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity. I, I'm here to represent STEP. We have several of the workers here, STEP Tutor, that are involved with the program, and I just want them to stand so we, everyone can see who they are. There are more of us, but they couldn't make it, but we're just grateful to know that they came tonight. I want to, I want to start with a story in relations to the purpose of STEP Tutoring. A story is told of an old man who was known for his wisdom. Everyone in the community would come and ask him different questions, and they would walk away pleased by the answer that they would get, that he would give them. Two young men grew up, and they heard about this old man. They said, "Well, he's been telling these people, and people think he knows everything. Let's see if he know, let's see if he can answer what we're about to do." Two young boys found a bird, and they put the bird in their hand, walked down to the, to the city where the old man was. And they said to the old man, "Sir, you're known for giving good advice. You're known for helping people in the community, but we have a question that we want to ask you. We have a bird in our hand. We just want to know if that bird is alive or dead." The old man looked at them and pondered and said, "Young men, the bird is in your hand." I say this because our community is hurting, and the children are like those birds. They're in our hands. We either help them, or we can just let them go on. And many, there are many programs that are doing a great job helping them. But right where I am, the violence, the children, education, is, is, is in great need, is in dire need of support. We appreciate the support we have received, but we're needing more. We were asked to, we, we knew about filling out the grants. My concern is, we're getting a lot of children, we're getting a lot of parents coming out. We're about, we're about at the point of looking for another place to host it. But we need the support of the, of the city to keep this program going. To me, I'm like a, I'm like one of the soldiers on the Roman ship, not at the top being seen, but at the bottom rowing the ship to educational promises. And without the funds and without the support, we can't go further. We need your help. I'm begging, I'm pleading, please reconsider in finding something to keep us going forward, to giving these children an enrichment, an enriching education, not just, just the ones who've been expelled, but the ones who are coming, as well as the mothers, to let them know that we have your, we are in their hands of care and concern. Just to give you a brief update, a brief history, to, when we started the STEP, one of the mothers who lost, some of the mothers who lost their children to gun violence, we were meeting with them, as Josh mentioned. One of the mothers, the other mother was in relation to her daughter being expelled, straight A student. So as we were meeting, one of the mothers kept saying, "We need to step up. We need to step up. It's on us. We need help, but we need to step up." And as she was talking, I wrote down the word STEP. I put it in, I tried to break down the letters, I said, based upon that conversation, sharing thoughts on effective parenting. As the lady who came up beforehand, she mentioned, it takes a community to raise, it takes a village to raise a community or child. STEP is a part of this. We're all part of this, and we just need your encouragement. We need whatever you can help to give, to help us in our efforts. I thank you, and I appreciate your time. Are you any questions?
Before we go on to the next topic, I would let the public know that the city council received the recommendations from the Subcommittee for Social Service Funding, and then the council and myself can consider the allocations, and then we'll be making our final recommendations within the next couple of weeks. So, so each council member is able to provide input on funding opportunities. So next up is Gina Peluso.
I don't know how to follow that. Thank you, everybody that spoke. My name's Gina Peluso. I live here in Urbana. Thanks for your time. Thanks for allowing me the time to, to speak with you briefly. I did want to talk about two different subjects. One is the new fees that you guys are going to be discussing and voting. I guess the final vote is going to be tonight. No one wants to pay more fees, obviously, but the one fee that I saw that really stood out to me is the fee that, that, and, and just in full disclosure, I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. One of the fees that stood out to me is the new $200 fee that will be charged to put in a nomination for a landmark on a historic property if you don't have the owner's permission to do so. The Urbana zoning ordinance in two locations says that nominations may be bane by any person, and you do not need to have the owner's permission to make that. So I just wanted to point that out to you when you're considering that tonight, is that that the zoning ordinance calls it out twice, that anyone, it doesn't say you have to have $200, and it also says you don't need to have the owner's permission to make that nomination. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the landmark, the Landmark Hotel, and the redevelopment, and the letter of intent that you guys are gonna discuss tonight. I have a bunch of questions, I'm just gonna lay them out here, I'd be happy to send these, this to all of you tomorrow via email. There are a couple of whereas's that I'm concerned about. Whereas, the city has a strong interest in entering into a redevelopment agreement with an appropriate, experienced, and qualified redeveloper. I Googled the gentleman, I can't find anything on him. Nothing. I can't find anything on him, nor on his LLC, Marks &amp; Affiliates. I did find that there are a couple of other LLCs that also have to do with hotels, three of them, that come up as hits for Mr. Spiritos. But there's nothing that says that they've redeveloped anything, I can't find anything. So I'm hoping that you guys have that information, because I couldn't find it. The other whereas is that we're redeveloping old, we want to, that Marks, it says Marks &amp; Affiliates is a business enterprise that acquires and redevelops older hotels, but again, I couldn't find anything on Marks &amp; Affiliates. So if you guys have that information, I'm gonna hang around, I'd love to hear that. Uh, the letter of intent, 1C, says that the preservation of historic elements will happen wherever feasible. The Landmark Hotel is on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's also a local landmark in Urbana. So any kind of, I'm concerned about wherever feasible. I don't know what that means. Also, 1G talks about a reconditioned exterior. What does that mean? Again, it's on the National Register, it's on, it's a local landmark in Urbana, so there are certain criteria that would need to be followed for any kind of an exterior reconditioning. I'm concerned about what the establishment of an additional hotel motel tax classification means. Does that mean for all the hotel motels in Urbana, or just that one? And why would people wanna go there if they have to pay more tax to go to that one? The reimbursement expenses shall be issued to the developer in an amount no less than $5.2 million, but there doesn't, there's no maximum listed, it just says what the minimum is. I'm wondering if we should have some kind of a maximum listed there? Also, they're gonna get an enterprise-owned incentive to have a sales tax exemption. How much is that gonna be? Will they be applying for federal and/or state historic property tax credits? They're, they're able to do both of those, because the property is locally landmarked and is on the National Register. How many years does it mean when we say we won't incentivize any directly competing hotel property? How much is it gonna cost the city to commit to setting aspirational goals for female and minority-owned businesses to work on this project? Green Street Realty's getting $10,000 of the city's money to do that at 200 South Vine. Building permits is included as a fee. If the property is locally landmarked, they don't pay building permit fees. That's part of the city ordinance. Then, the two that got me, and they're right next to each other, and I'm gonna make this as quick as I can, continuously operate for a period of 10 years from the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, but the city gets the right to review and approve any sale of the property that does not result in the continuous operation of the project. Which one is it? Are we, are we asking them to operate it for 10 years, but if they can't, then we're gonna have the right to review who they might sell it to? And I'm just about done. There's a whereas in the interim agreement that says the developer, shortly following the execution of a redevelopment agreement with the city, will complete the process necessary for the developer to acquire the rights, title, and interest to the property. What does shortly mean? That seems really open-ended to me. Is it a week? Is it a month? Is it three years? And then, if we're gonna reimburse the developer up to $75,000 if we can't come to an agreement on this deal, what happens if they back out? Do we get to charge them for staff's time? Thank you.[896.11][896.11](applause)
A question?
Yes.
Yeah, Gina, when you mentioned about the concern about the exterior.
Yeah.
Is the exterior, when it's, when it's renovated, is it subject to review by the Historic Preservation Commission?
It is.
Our, is the entire hotel?
The 1984 addition was considered to be non-contributing. So the newer part, uh, I believe, probably may not have to have a certificate of authenticity, a certificate of appropriateness, but the older part, the 1924 part, certainly would. I'm not the chair of the HPC, I'm a member, so I'm, I'm reciting that off the top of my head. But yeah, it, there are certain criteria, and there's a matrix in the back of the zoning ordinance for Article 12, which is the Historic Preservation Part, that lists which renovations, restorations would need what kind of approval. Some of them can be approved administratively, some of them have to come before the HPC.
So potentially, the non-contributing wing could be renovated in a way that would be completely different, perhaps?
Perhaps, again, I'm not looking at the HPC ordinance, so I'm not exactly sure. I do believe, though, that when it was landmarked, and I did wanna mention, I was here for the first landmark nomination, I was here for the second landmark nomination, I was here when the city went over the development deal with the current owner of the hotel. So I've been advocating for this hotel for a really long time. I wish I had enough money to buy it myself and run it, and all that good stuff, I don't. I do appreciate all the, the time and effort that the city's gone to, to, to help preserve this hotel, and to try to get it reactivated. I think all of us wants nothing more than to have it reactivated. I would like to see the new portion not look something that is out of place with the old portion. That would be my preference, but...
Thank you.
Thanks again for your time, everyone.[1030.82][1030.82](applause)
I have two cards from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood. They are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems, and they are supporting social service funding for STEP and TRS. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to the budget presentation. And I would ask Bill to take the chair while I join Stale.
Okay, next on the agenda is a budget presentation by Mayor Marlin and Carol Mitten and Ms. Press.
Oh, here, I'll get it for you. Set at the bottom. Oh. Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. With me tonight is City Administrator Carol Mitten and Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan. The focus mostly is going to be on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. I did wanna start out a little bit different this year by highlighting some of the accomplishments and progress we've made over the past two years. We've spent a lot of time focused on the financial challenges in the city of Urbana, and I wanted to take a few minutes to focus on the progress we've made in spite of the financial challenges, and in some cases, because of the financial challenges. We've had to think about doing things differently, think about new ways of doing things, and highlighting priorities. So I thought I'd go over some of that tonight. Just a reminder of where we started. Two years ago, we started with a $2.5 million structural budget deficit. A structural deficit means that your recurring expenditures are exceeding your recurring income, and it's the kind of thing that doesn't correct itself over time. You can keep hoping, but what happens is it keeps growing, and that's what we had going on for several years before 2017. So what we have done since 2017, and with your help, is make some strategic and intentional decisions, and have taken serious steps to address it. And we're more than half, at the end of the next fiscal year, we will have, we'd be more than halfway through eliminating the structural budget deficit. We also had our city reserves below recommended levels. Our goal, and we are working, we have now reached our minimum recommended level of financing for city reserves. We have reversed the trend in underfunding our police and fire pensions, and several years down the line, we will be back where we need to be. We've developed other ways, and alternative ways, to finance what was an underfunded vehicle and equipment replacement fund. And this is the fund that pays for everything from fire trucks and police cars to our dump trucks and our city vehicles and equipment. We also had taken out two loans when we had higher-than-normal bills for the 911 emergency service. We had taken out two loans from the city of Champaign. We've been repaying those over several years, and at the end of next year, we'll be done paying those loans back. And of course, our goal ultimately is to eliminate the $2.5 million structural budget deficit. This is important, because if we're going to provide the programs and services and do what we need to do for people in the city of Urbana, we need to have our, get our financial house in order. So throughout this, as we built our budget, and as we built our financial plan, we're always looking at what services we provide, how we provide them, can we do it in a different way, and be more effective about it? We've been prioritizing needs, we've addressed, looked at spending reductions, as well as revenue increases, and we have had a focus on economic development, growth in our tax base, and sustainable growth in population. Long-term, that's going to be a key to our financial sustainability. Throughout the last two years, we have had to focus on several areas. One is transitions in leadership, and I'll talk about each of these in a little bit more detail. We have explored and implemented different ways to provide services with an eye toward becoming more efficient and more effective. We're planning for the future, we've focused on growing our economy, we have plans and are promoting equity, and, so we have a more inclusive future for folks, and we're celebrating what's unique about Urbana and telling our story. Leadership transitions. We had transitions in mayor, city clerk, and some council members. For the first time in 11 years, last year, we filled the position of city administrator. That was my top goal for coming into this office, was to restore professional management to the city of Urbana. So we were delighted that Carol Mitten joined us last year just about this time. Due to retirements, we've had retiring police chief, fire chief, public works director, and community development services director. Fire chief has been hired, we have, we, I did appoint the very first female police chief, she's since retired, and we have an interim police chief. The public works director search is underway, we are close to bringing in people for interviews, and the community development services director position has been filled. This, each of the, several of these searches were national searches, which represents an enormous amount of staff time and effort to fill those, to fill those positions. And on top of these searches, our human resources department also processed 1,293 employment applications over the past two years. So these, 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 these things I'm highlighting tonight are in addition to the, what we'll call the normal, everyday duties of our staff. We've spent a great deal of time analyzing and looking at our internal, the way the city does business, and this goes to be being more efficient and more effective at providing the services that we need to provide. One of the biggest projects over the past couple of years has been the implementation of the citywide financial system, MUNIS. That's, that's the basis for every, all the materials that you see tonight, it's our payroll, and we're about to add the opportunities to put all of our licensing functions into this system as well. This has been a huge undertaking, and Elizabeth and her team really deserve kudos for, for the rollout that we've had. We've added a number of online services in the last couple of years, rent, including rental registration, code enforcement, taking building permits, taking complaints. We're starting to implement, or Public Works has begun implementation of their asset management and work tracking program. We have online services now for parking enforcement, and we can take police reports for minor offenses. A number of internal policies and procedures have been implemented, as well as a couple of important financial policies that you all passed a couple of years ago related to our pension funding and our city reserves. Some of the internal policies focus on cybersecurity, travel policy, purchasing policies, social media, and one of our big projects underway now is updating the city liquor code. That'll be a total rewrite to make it more usable, flexible, and adaptable to the way people do business today. We're moving collective bargaining in-house, that's going to reduce attorney fees for the next round of contracts, and we successfully negotiated three labor contracts. They all come up at the same time, which, which, it puts a strain on, on, on staff, that represents hundreds of hours of meetings, but, but it, we did it, and we're looking forward to productive bargaining with an, with in-house team. We're, have begun to plan for a redo of our city website, again, to make it more effective and user-friendly for both the public and for city employees. We've also spent, our HR department is working on a number of staff leadership development plans, so that we can start to, well, can really kind of enhance our efforts to grow leaders from within, which, and, and give people opportunities for professional development. So that's just a few of the things that we've been working on internally. Planning for the future is a very important part of what we do. We've begun, the first, we finished the first phase of the facilities master plan, that resulted in a report on the, a very detailed report on the condition of every facility owned by the city, and you're gonna be getting a report on that from our, Vince Gustafson, next week, I believe.
June 3rd.
June 3rd. So you'll, and then Phase 2 and 3 of this master planning process will be a space needs assessment, programming needs assessment, and then the master plan. Our stormwater system master plan will be updated for the first time since 1980. When, the last time they did that, they didn't use computers. So that is long overdue. We're also doing a citywide pavement condition assessment. So for the first time ever, we're going to have a real-time report on everything under the street, on the ground, and above ground in our city. And why is this important? Well, we need to be able to make decisions about how we allocate resources, where we're gonna spend money, and rather than being in a reactive, you know, crisis management mode, we'll be able to plan on how we spend our money and where. Again, to make it, it's more efficient and effective. We are planning, we have obtained funds for the extension of the Kickaboo Rail Trail through the downtown Urbana, from East Urbana through, onto Lincoln Avenue. That's a collaborative effort with the Forest Preserve District, Park, Park District, being led by the Regional Planning Commission. And it was done with a grant from the state of Illinois, matching funds from Carl Foundation Hospital. That's going to make a real, add to the recreation, the connectivity among the neighborhoods, and really spur improvements in north downtown. The community visioning for what's in your square, and the current market in your square visioning, is helping us get input from the community on what they wanna see at the Lincoln Square site, how they want the farmer's market to function, and where in the future. And that's going to serve as the basis for planning as well. Pedestrian master planning is underway, led by the Regional Planning Commission, and you'll soon get a opportunity to consider creating a historic district in downtown Urbana that's due to work done by Alice Novak and her students, so that we can be on the National Register of Historic Districts. And that will help support renovation of our buildings in our downtown. So those are some of the planning efforts underway, in addition to the everyday work that folks do. Just as, I had asked staff for some numbers on, on, just, well, just by the numbers. So in addition to some of these planning efforts, Community Development Services did through 3,793 housing inspections. They issued 32 building permits for major projects and approved site plans for 15 construction sites, in addition to managing some of these other, other efforts. And Plant Commission also processed, we've been talking a lot about the Plant Commission cases lately. They processed 75, the department processed 75 cases coming out of either the Plant Commission, ZBA, or the Design Review Board in the last two years, so it's considerable amount. So, a third area of emphasis has been on growing our economy and our tax base. And again, this is key to financial stability in the future. We've had a significant amount of new construction, either in, in the planning stages or underway in the city. We've supported creative reuse. We've got expansions and renovations underway, and we have had a focus on supporting small business startups and, and building an ecosystem for entrepreneurs. Five of the major residential projects that have come before us in one form or another are pictured here. They total about $85 million in new construction. The project in the upper left-hand corner is the project at 200 South Vine. This represents the first new residential construction in downtown Urbana in about 13 years. This is going to help reach our, help us reach our goals of 24/7 activity in the downtown and filling in some of the vacant lots and actually improving, just improving the activity in our downtown area. The Think Urbana program is a project coming out of the enterprise zone. It had, it provides property tax abatements and state sales tax waivers on construction materials. It's designed to incentivize single-family duplex and townhome construction. We've both increased our single-family and duplex building permits, and we've more than doubled our regional market share of new home construction in the last three years. So that's a, that's a good outcome there. Lots of examples of creative reuse of a build, of buildings, again, supported by the city. They range from taking a former bank building and law firm, and it's becoming a restaurant and event space. The garage sale space was now where Broadway Food Hall is. Salt and Light and the U-Haul property on Phila Road both represent really successful reuses of big-box stores. One sat empty for a number of years. It was not our fault. That was just, the owner just didn't let go of it for a long time. But both of those are reuse of big-box grocery stores, and we're glad to see that. There was a very successful renovation of a former sorority that's now renovated into apartments on Lincoln Avenue. And then the Sea Adventures in Time and Space have taken over a former, well, away former. It was the Gil Sports Facility and more recently, more of storage. And that's just a, just a smattering of, of the things that have happened. And then, the renovation that is at the forefront now is the proposal to renovate the Landmark Hotel. It's a $17 million project. And tonight, the council, of course, is considering a letter of intent and with the development agreement to be completed by, by midsummer. And there's a number of other expansions and renovations that have taken place around town. We also had, in the last couple of years, 27 business opening grants. These are small grants to small businesses. People, through our business opening grant program, people complete counseling through, with the Small Business Development Center, and then are eligible for funds for both opening businesses. And, and it supports individuals who really need a, need a hand to get started. And a lot of these folks are located in our downtown, and we just issued our first one for small business on Phila Road. We have a, a goal of promoting equity. It's one of the city council priorities. A number of ways to do that, the one that we are, we'll be focusing on and have begun to the last year or so is, we are, similar to Champaign's, Champaign Diversity Advancement Program, we will be developing a way to support minority and women business, a framework for minority and women business support. We've allocated money in the budget to purchase the software to maintain minority vendor database, similar to what they're using in Champaign. The goal is to have a program similar to our sister cities so that we can, people can move easily from one city to the other. We do have hiring goals in all our development agreements now, and we made a specific attempt to increase minority applicants for firefighter recruitment, and we increased those numbers by about 111% over the last time we did it. So we had a more success, successful outreach to, to folks. Another way to promote equity is to reduce disparities. There's, you know, there's been a lot of focus on racial disparities in traffic stops. We did, in the last report, we did show reductions in those disparities. But there's other ways to do that as well. One is, we've implemented a program called Fix-It Vouchers, where if people are driving around without, with a minor equipment violation, and usually it's headlights or taillights, and it's amazing, since I've started looking at vehicles, I think half the vehicles in town have a headlight out. But anyway, we, they're, they're stopped, they're not giving a ticket if there's nothing else going on, and they get a voucher they can take to advance auto parts and get their light fixed for, and we'll, the voucher's good for up to $25. So we've had, it's been, it's very, been very well-received. We, last fall, repealed the aggressive solicitation ordinance. The, our community outreach person, professional, Preston James, put together a, an educational video on traffic stops, and he's going to be working one on pedestrian interactions with the police. And our human relations officer is going to be reaching out this year with some workshops, really educating the public about our human rights ordinances, ordinance and the protections for housing, employment that it contains. And even the SNAP benefits we offer, we can double the value of SNAP benefits at our market at the square, which really helps make our farmer's market more accessible to, to lower-income people. And then, one of the most important ways we can promote equity is equity in housing and access to clean, safe housing. So the Aspen Court renovation is underway now. We are working with the Housing Authority. They're planning a 24-unit building on Colorado Avenue called Pinewood Place. This will be targeting people with disabilities and seniors. And then, there will be another Housing Authority project in conjunction with Brinshaw to build on Lyman Avenue in place of the Urbana Townhomes. Another area we have focused on the last couple of years is really telling Urbana's story and, and celebrating what's different and unique about Urbana. We've expanded the Public Arts Program to Public Arts and Culture. That reflects the, really the diversity of our population, the global nature of our population, and makes it a more inclusive program. Open scene, open mic, started with a National Endowment for the Arts grant. It's continued, and that's been a great success, but because, again, it, it, it opens up our arts program to people who really hadn't participated before, so it was much more inclusive. We've successfully implemented the Bike Share Program in conjunction with University of Illinois and the City of Champaign. Coming up and next, actually, this Saturday is the first Downtown Get Down. There's going to be four of those throughout the summer in our downtown. Lots of activities and events for people of all ages and abilities, and music, food, activities for the kids, and it'll be Main Street and surrounds. So the first Downtown Get Down will be this coming Saturday, and they will be on the last Saturday of each month, culminating in the Sweet Corn Festival. Our reforestation initiative was a great success because of the donations that we received. We were able to plant 370 extra trees, which whittles down the backlog that we had when all the ash trees were removed due to the Emerald Ash Bore, thanks to generous donations. We've, have an enhanced social media presence. We started a monthly newsletter and a quarterly Coffee with the Mayor, where, where I go out to restaurants in different neighborhoods and buy coffee, and just am available to, to listen to what people have to say. We're also starting our pilot program this summer, patterned after the Goal-getters Project in Champaign, but certainly cooperating with a lot of other efforts in the area of summer, a summer youth program. And we're starting out with 12 students that the middle school and high school personnel have, have recommended for participation. But, and that will begin, be kicked off on June 1st and continue throughout the school year. And then, Solar Urbana-Champaign is another one of our success stories. We have 180 solar arrays installed so far. So some of these, a lot of these things are, things that make Urbana special and really go to our, go to our personality and character. Also, in the last couple of years, we, our Bana Fire Department achieved the ISO Class I category. This is achieved by less than 1% of fire departments nationwide. It reflects meeting standards in emergency response to fires, plus your 911 emergency service, as well as the water company's involvement. So it's a great honor to get to this classification. We renewed our gold-level bicycle-friendly status. That is the, we're still the only gold-level bicycle-friendly city in the state of Illinois. The Government Finance Officers Association recognized the city with a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. UPTV received several awards at the Best of the Midwest Video Fest. We were the, recognized along with Champaign as a Midwest Living's Greatest Midwest Food Town. And we were just named, and this was initiative led by the University of Illinois, Illinois, the AARP and World Health Organization Age-Friendly Champaign-Urbana. So these, these achievements are, reflect a great deal of work also by the community members and staff as well. And much of this, and most of it, would not be possible without the support and leadership and input of, of city council. And I appreciate everything that, that we've done the last couple of years and look forward to tackling some of the tough issues as we go forward. Thank you. And I'll turn this over to Carol and Elizabeth, and they will delve into the budget.
Do you want to wait for questions to then? Okay.
Yeah, I talked too long.
Elizabeth Hannon, Finance Director.
Pardon?
Oh, let's just introduce, oh, who's first? Carol? Okay, Carol Mitten.
Okay. This isn't working. I'm going to start with a few of the high-level takeaways from the budget for FY '20. In the financial forecast from 2018, we said it would take three years and require $2.5 million to eliminate the structural deficit. And as Diane said, with this budget, we will be more than halfway there by this time next year. We need to especially focus our economic development efforts for redevelopment downtown and in our other TIF districts where we can really leverage our revenue sources. And as a leadership team, we took a deep dive into the operations of each department this year. Based on what we learned, we were able to wring out enough savings internally by right sizing our staffing in selected areas to the workload. In other areas, as we've discussed here, from time to time, we're woefully understaffed. Next year, any further reductions will almost certainly impact services to residents. Now Elizabeth is going to give us a summary of how we put the budget together.
So, as you know, the budget process begins with a financial forecast, which we do very early in the calendar year. And when we began working on the fiscal 2019 budget, which is the year that we're currently in, we had predicted a need for $2.5 million in adjustments to rectify our structural deficit. We, we made good progress on that. We, we got about half a million dollars closer to where we needed to be. And so, in this year's financial forecast that you saw in January, we predicted a need for $2 million in, in adjustments. And the specific plan that we talked about for fiscal year 2020 was a quarter of a million dollars in revenue increases combined with half a million dollars in expenditure reductions. So we designed, based on that, an internal process to produce that outcome in the proposed budget, and that internal process happened between February and May, and the proposed budget we're going to talk about tonight is the outcome. So, a couple of things that have helped us to make good progress are pension funding, specifically in 2018, and in May, you adopted a new pension funding policy that put us on a more aggressive track to fully funding our police and fire pensions. And then, the first step along that track came with approval of the property tax levy in 2018, which is the levy that's going to be extended, extended here very soon. Also, in terms of structural deficit, you'll see that the proposed budget has recurring expense at 97.4% of recurring revenues. That's more than 1% below our policy goal, but we knew at the time that we saw the forecast that would be necessary to go even below that level because we haven't yet reached the point where our revenues are growing as quickly as our expenditures. In terms of reserves, you'll see that in the proposed budget, reserves in the general fund are at 17.4% of recurring expenditures, which exceeds the policy minimum of 15%. In addition, we were able to allocate some one-time money from the general fund to build reserves for workers' comp and liability claims, which had been depleted. Without adequate reserves there, that potentially was something that might cause us to have to dip into general fund reserves. So I'm going to hand it back to Carol here.
Thank you. I'm going to give an overview of some of the context in which we're planning our budget. So I want to begin by saying, as we all know, the university is the anchor institution of our community. They contribute to every aspect of our community, including financially, with the buying power of the students, faculty, staff, and visitors. Healthcare institutions are also an important employer in our community as well, bringing large numbers of employees and visitors into Urbana on a daily basis. These institutions are growing, and that is good for Urbana. Several of our future infrastructure investments, notably the Kickapoo Rail Trail Extension that the, the mayor mentioned, we have the feasibility study underway, and EMCOR Phase 5, are geared towards strengthening our physical connection to our anchor institutions to bring the many benefits of their, of their presence here into our central business district. And in order for these institutions to remain an employer of choice, they need us to have a vibrant community for their employees as well. The university has a flash index that shows the, the general state of affairs in, in the state of Illinois, and that is growing modestly. In fact, it's been in, it's, it's been on the growth side of the index since February of 2012. So that's a good thing as well. Assessments in Urbana are rising, and we need to be very focused on making investments that will have a direct impact on increasing assessments and property tax revenues. The unemployment in the Champaign-Urbana metropolitan statistical area is 4.8% as of March, and this is a good, positive downward trend since our recent high of 5.5% in January. We have very little debt, and that's good. Paying off our debt will provide some flexibility for us as we confront the large and looming infrastructure needs ahead. Economic development is essential to our long-term revenue growth because it is how we build both population and our tax base. We need to prioritize economic development activities that will have the greatest impact on both of those revenue generators. We had a lot of development activity last year, and you heard about the mayor, major projects from the mayor. We will need to exceed this level of activity in the future in order to stabilize our finances. We will need to exceed this level of activity in the future in order to stabilize our finances, but we can't do that without increasing staff. That is another looming issue for us in next year's budget. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget reductions that Elizabeth mentioned that our target for reductions this year was $500,000. We achieved part of that by eliminating 5.25 FTEs in the proposed budget. Some of those reductions were full-time positions, and some were reductions from full-time to part-time. In all cases, we reached separation agreements with the employees involved. Our goal is always to achieve respectful transitions that provide severance support and outplacement assistance where appropriate. That's why you see there on the slide, we're achieving recurring savings of $370,000 annually, but there are one-time costs associated with achieving that. We made changes to the VERF by deciding to selectively use debt when the need for funding is especially high. That way, we don't have to fully fund the deficit that was created by the past practice of underfunding the VERF. And the reduction to funding for the library is their proportionate share of the reduction to the city overall, and Celeste Choat will explain in a few minutes how they've accommodated that reduction in the library budget. Later this evening, you'll be voting on two resolutions for revenue increases on which the mayor's proposed budget is based: increased late fees for parking fines and increased tax on packaged liquor. These items were selected because they are highly discretionary and easily avoidable by those individuals who choose to. In the overall fee schedule, we've also proposed modest fee increases, primarily to keep pace with the increased costs of providing certain services. The biggest area of new spending is for the capital program. We transfer roughly $800,000 of general fund money to fund CIP projects through the annual operating budget. Three one-time items will basically double that amount. We recommend funding the first phase of a two-phase project to replace streetlights in the campus area. And I'll give you a little bit more information about that with the CIP highlights in a few more slides. We recommend funding both remaining phases of the public facilities master plan so that by this time next year, we can determine which facilities we will invest in and which will need to be reconfigured, sold, or replaced. Finally, as an outgrowth of the Phase 1 facility condition assessments, we have identified critical needs that cannot be postponed for which an additional $50,000 is needed. Another significant proposal for one-time money is to shift $500,000 into the retained risk fund. This fund is used to pay for liability and workers' comp claims. The fund currently doesn't have enough money in it to reflect our exposure in these areas. We also have a one-time need for approximately $200,000 in legal fees so that we can continue to pursue the hospital tax litigation. I also want to highlight a comparatively small one-time need we plan to fund: a compensation and classification study for non-bargaining unit staff. We know we are lagging some of our neighboring communities in competitiveness from a salary perspective. Not unlike the other holistic studies we are performing, those are mostly around capital, this study will tell us how much of a salary gap exists for our various professionals. It will help us remove internal inconsistencies among classifications and prioritize the most hard-to-fill positions. We can only hope to narrow the gaps over time. We will not be able to act on everything we learn in a single year. Although you will hear more detail about the capital improvement plan on June 3rd, I want to share a few highlights with you this evening. EMCOR is an ongoing project with the final phase, Phase 5, being entirely in Urbana. Phase 5 is currently anticipated to cost around $4 million in total, and construction and construction observation in FY '20 are expected to cost around $3 million. Funding the EMCOR Phase 5 project comes from both local dollars and state motor fuel tax proceeds, as well as from the Stormwater Utility Fund and the Sanitary Sewer Fund for fund-specific activities. This next batch of projects that you see on the slide reflects our priority projects for resurfacing. The Lincoln and Springfield Project is our highest priority. It is currently under review by the Historic Preservation Commission for compliance with guidelines in the historic district. The outcome of that review may affect the cost and schedule for this project. And I want to remind folks that the CIP is a funding plan; it is not a construction schedule. Our ability to execute all of the projects in the years in which they are funded is dependent on many things, including clearances from relevant approval authorities, staffing levels, weather, and so on. The reconstruction of University Avenue is a major reconstruction of that road from Wright Street to just east of Cunningham Avenue. It is an $8 million IDOT project with a local contribution of $210,000. It will include safety enhancements for all modes of travel and an upgraded pedestrian experience. The construction contract letting has been pushed back several times, and the project is expected to take two years to complete. There are several blocks of streetlights on campus that I mentioned earlier. They require replacement, and they're along West Nevada and South Matthews Avenue. This project has been postponed to the point that the level of urgency to complete it is now quite high. The project has been scoped to be done in two phases, the first of which will be completed next year with the proposed funding. I mentioned the public facilities master plan earlier. More so than probably any of the other studies, completion of this work as soon as possible will ensure that we don't spend money on facilities for which we will not reap the long-term benefit. We also have an urgent need to replace our aging parking meters because the internal operating systems are no longer being supported by the manufacturer. Based on the extensive knowledge of our staff, they've determined that about one-quarter of those can become mobile meter-only so that we don't have to replace the physical meters themselves in those locations. And now Elizabeth will walk you through a high-level summary of the overall budget.
Okay, so just a few quick slides here. This first slide looks at revenues for all city funds. And as you can see, the bottom part in the purple is the general fund. The top part in the green is other city funds. So the total is $47.6 million, but slightly more than 2/3 of that is in the general fund. And as you probably know, the general fund pays for most of our basic city services, virtually all of our police and fire protection, and most of what we do in public works. So in terms of expenditures, again, looking at all funds, expenditures for all funds will be about $59.3 million. Now, that might sound alarming at first because it's significantly higher than our revenues, but that's largely because for capital projects, we often accumulate funds over a period of years that then get spent in one big chunk. And that is what is happening this year. You can see the purple portion of the chart is the capital category, and that includes expenditures for capital improvement projects such as EMCOR and capital equipment purchases. It's common to see that fluctuate quite a bit from year to year. Personnel expenses are the large portion at the bottom of the chart, and those overall increase by less than 4%. That includes across-the-board wage increases. However, I do want to point out that without those one-time costs for separation payments that Carol mentioned, without increases in health insurance costs, and without increased payments to police and fire pension funds, we would actually be looking at a decrease in our personnel costs, which again is consistent with the reduction in the staffing level. So zeroing in on the general fund here, if you look at general fund revenues by source, we can see that we have a wide variety of revenue sources. But the biggest chunk on this chart is for sales tax. That's nearly 1/3 of our general fund revenues. And I know you guys get tired of this because I probably say this every year, but that's something to be concerned about. That level of dependency on sales tax revenue, which can fluctuate considerably, particularly during an economic downturn, is an issue for us. Property tax and income tax are the next largest pieces there, and those make up 25% of general fund revenues. Income tax is distributed by the state based on population, so that's another way that development benefits the city. And I wanted to focus a little bit more on property tax revenue. As you may know, our 2018 tax levy hasn't been extended yet, so this is information from the 2017 tax levy, but we don't expect the picture to change dramatically in terms of how it shakes out among the different taxing districts. So as you can see, the biggest piece of the property tax levy goes to schools; that's more than half. The city receives 13% of all property taxes. Of that 13% that the city receives, more than half of that goes to the library, and the remaining piece of it, oh, no, to the library. And the remaining piece that goes to the city is shared between the general fund and pension costs for police and fire. So the actual portion of your tax bill that goes to pay for services in the city's general fund is less than 4%. So again, looking more closely at general fund expenditures by classification, more than 70% of general fund expenditures are in the personnel category. That's all salaries and benefits, including those pension contributions. That's down just slightly from our FY '19 projection. The transfers are increasing here, as you can see, and that's largely due to those one-time allocations that we talked about for capital improvement and workers' comp and liability claim reserves. One of the things we always look very closely at is our fund balance in the general fund. This chart shows where our fund balance is compared to our current policy of maintaining a reserve of at least 15% of recurring expenditures. As you can see, we see the fund balance dropping just a bit from where we expect it to be at the end of this year, but still well above that 15% limit. As I mentioned earlier, we expect to be at 17.4% of recurring revenues, and the reason for that drop, again, largely is those capital transfers and transfers for insurance reserves. Then looking at recurring revenue and expense in the general fund. For the proposed budget, our recurring expenditures will be 97.4% of recurring revenues, well within our policy limit of 98.5%. However, since we know that our revenues are not growing as fast as our expenditures, that gap is actually smaller than our projection for the end of the current year, even with planned revenue increases and expenditure reductions. So for as long as our recurring expenditures are growing faster than our recurring revenues, we're going to be in a position of having to either add revenues or decrease expenditures to maintain a balanced budget. And as you know, that goes to the whole issue of structural deficit, which we have been addressing now for a couple of years and probably will be for a couple of more years. So with that, I'm going to hand it back to Carol to wrap it up.
Okay, so looking ahead. We get lots of questions about what lies ahead for the FY '21 budget and beyond. So let me say first, we are optimistic. We have done everything we said we would do in terms of identifying cuts and proposing new revenues, and we've achieved the results we expected. The city has a fine leadership team and a committed workforce, and we could not have come this far without their cooperation and commitment. I think it's safe to say that there is no significant internal excess capacity for us to capture. We learned a lot this year, and we asked department heads many pointed questions. We're continuing to think creatively about how we do our work, and we continue to review every vacancy before we fill it to ensure we have the proper alignment. That means that any future increases in recurring expenditures are likely to impact the services that residents receive. We will be spending the next year focusing on alternative methods of service delivery to look for efficiencies through new methods, revised approaches, and collaboration with other jurisdictions. And there will certainly be revenue increases in the future. Whether those come from new sources like legalized marijuana or existing sources like adjusting fees, we need additional revenue to help finally stabilize our budget and fund the much-needed capital investments we must make. We will not be able to address our long-term capital needs with a status quo approach. What will become painfully clear once the facility's master plan, pavement condition assessment, and the stormwater master plan are complete is that the ongoing transfer of only $800,000 a year from the general fund to capital projects is insufficient to supplement other sources of capital dollars to make any headway with our significant deferred maintenance. We are losing ground every day. And now I'm going to tell you what's ahead for the budget review itself. So when we're done answering your questions, then Celeste and her team will make a presentation about the library budget. And then for the remainder of this week, the mayor and Elizabeth and myself will be making a series of presentations to staff so they can understand the budget and we can answer their questions. And then on June 3rd, we'll be back and we'll talk in more detail about the staffing changes that have led to the reductions, including a presentation about a reorganization in public works. Vince Gustafson will be here to walk you through what we've learned through the facility condition assessment. That's the Phase 1 of the master plan. Brad Bennett and Craig Schonkweiler will make a presentation about the capital improvement plan. And then we will also make a presentation that evening about the vehicle and equipment replacement plan and any revisions to financial policies. And then we'll have a public hearing on the same, or you will have a public hearing on the same, on June 10th, and then there'll be a vote by the council, we hope, on June 17th on the budget ordinance, budget amendment, and any revisions to the financial policies. And so with that, I think we're done, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions? First Charlie.
I'd just like to point out to the public that Councilmember Hazen has been watching live online and is on the phone as well. He may have some questions.
Okay, so Dean has joined us. Okay, thanks. Dennis?
Yeah, I'd like to ask if there's any change or future indebtedness or future solution for the road condition on Windsor Avenue? Does that affect our budget in the future?
Well, as you've been briefed, the Windsor Road issue is in court right now, so we really can't speak much more to that other than we expect a good outcome from that.
Other questions? Eric?
So I'm guessing that this is a minor point budgetarily, but I'm presuming that the street lighting will be replaced with more efficient lighting. Is the reduced cost, you know, for the electricity, is it, how significant is that?
That's a good question. I'll get you a specific answer, but you are correct. We're replacing mercury vapor lighting with LED lighting, and there's a significant savings to be had. But it's not, while it seems like a long distance, it's a few blocks of streetlights, but I'll get you a specific order of magnitude for that.
Mary Alice?
So first, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work. I know this has been many, many months, and I really appreciated seeing all of the accomplishments of the city at one time. We usually get it piecemeal, so it was really nice to see all of that improvement.
And that's just a fraction.
So I just kind of wanted to walk through some of the numbers. And so the goal was to reduce spending, recurring expenses by $500,000 and to increase revenue by $250,000 roughly. So we're talking about $750,000, right? So in terms of the additional revenue, there are two things. One is the increase in fees, and the second one is the increase in packaged liquor license, which is about $292, approximately. So we're about $42,000 in the plus column, right? Okay. So then you said that we were reducing staff by $370,000, which of course doesn't lead us to the $500,000. Did we, did you guys achieve the, up to the $500,000 reduction in this budget?
Yes.
Yes, because, because when you include the staffing reductions, the changes in the vehicle replacement funding, and I'm forgetting one piece here.
The, the library.
Oh, and the library's reductions.
Oh, the library's piece. So the library's about 60K.
Yes, we, we met it and exceeded it somewhat. However, as, as you also probably realize, there were some things that had to be added to the budget, as is the case every year, so.
So, so the, do you know off the top of your head how much the VERF was?
119,000.
So it was 119,000, because I guess I'm a little confused about that. We had discussed a leasing program last year in which we were going to not have to, you know, rebuild our VERF, right? And VERF is Vehicle Replacement Fund, I believe. Is that correct? Is that, is that what those letters stand for? I know we keep calling it VERF, but I just want-
Yeah, Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund.
Thank you. Okay, so, so we're not going to do that anymore, which means now we have to go through and we have to replace those funds. So how are we saving 119,000?
So this goes to the, the history of underfunding the vehicle and equipment replacement program. So the, the program is basically funded through transfers from all the budgets that own those different pieces of equipment. And so we, we actually, we're going to save some money through the leasing program. I think we were able to reduce the budget by like 69,000 last year, but as we started digging into the details, what we realized there was that there was a better answer. And the better answer was for us just to issue debt periodically to level out that equipment replacement funding, because we end up paying a much lower interest rate on our own debt than the rate that's implicit in the lease calculations.
Okay, so I might bug you about more details. I understand the difference between-
Well, we actually have a memo coming, so you're going to get a whole presentation on that on June 3rd, because we knew you had questions.
[laughing].
You're not the only one.
Excuse me. So, and then just to make sure I understood what Carol had presented in terms of staff reductions of 370,000, and then a one-time cost of 363,000 for, I'm assuming, sick and vacation payout. What else does that contain for those five employees?
There's also some severance payments in there. There's outplacement support.
So approximately how much per person? I'm just curious how much that costs.
It, it varies quite a lot by the position and the amount of longevity that the person had. The other thing that's included in that 363,000 is those positions don't all end on July 1. So to the extent that they're continuing and being phased out over the next year, the salary that we're going to pay in FY20, we consider a one-time expense.
Okay, all right. And then, because it's not going to be reoccurring for the, so are there any other big, are there any other cuts to the budget, except for those, I've got three things here. I've got staff reduction, I've got VERF, and I've got the 60K, which is the library. Is there anything else?
I think there could, there could be some very small things that we didn't mention there, but I can make sure you have a complete list.
That would be great, because this is a big budget to go through, and I'm sure I might miss a line or two in here.
Well, and the, but the mayor's budget message in the front of the budget is a lot more detailed than what we do in the presentation.
Yeah, I'll go through it again. I did read it, so it would be good to have a list of all the things that we are cutting to reduce the reoccurring expenditures. I'll let my fellow council members ask any other questions.
Anyone else for the first round? Okay, second round, Eric.
I, I don't know, you know, we look at a variety of developments and they look really impressive, the Gather Project, 200 South Line, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't know how big an impact they have percentage-wise on the total assessed valuation on which our property tax is based. Our, our, now you're making those projections because you're projecting our, you know, projecting revenue ahead versus, versus expenditures. Or is, is there some light at the end of that tunnel in terms of increased property tax revenue in the maybe beginning a year or a couple of years from now?
Well, so our assessed value now for the 2018 levy that will be extended soon is, I'm going to say it's approaching 600 million dollars. So I think the example that we gave in the presentation of a couple of projects that had a value of-
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five million. So let's just round it off to 90. So let's assume that a third of that is the equalized assessed value on which our tax levy is based, 30 million. So that's potentially a five, just from those projects, a 5% increase in our assessed value. So at a constant tax rate, we could expect to receive an additional 5% in property tax revenue. Real simple, but.
That sounds pretty good to me.
It sounds pretty good to me, too.
I have a couple of questions. On the facilities study, I don't think we approved the RFP. That was out about a year ago. But last year at budget time, you were predicting a total cost of about 150,000. Now it looks like about 300,000. So I was wondering if, before our discussion on June 3rd, if it'd be possible to get the, their response to the RFP? I don't think we've seen that. And then we could have that to look at before the discussion.
I will say those earlier estimates were based on kind of a verbal estimate, and when we actually issued the RFP and got the responses back, there was a variety of, pretty wide variation in what the respondents would do. And the, the firm that we went with is Canon Design, and they were by far the most responsive and head and shoulders, I think, above the rest. And particularly in looking at their approach to the whole thing, especially as we go into the second and third phase, and it's a human-centered approach. So they're not only looking at bricks and mortars and facilities, they're looking at how people work, where people work, how people work together, and how we can work, you know, what the options are for working differently. And so what I expect to get out of this is not, you know, a list of, well, you need to build this, this, and this. It's, it's how you make the best use of the facilities that you have, so, and how you can think, you know, think in new terms of how and where people work and, and that sort of thing. So it's, it's going to be, they really are thinking outside the box here. And we have to look ahead to how are people going to work in 10 years? You know, it can be, you know.
Just to, just to add a little bit to that, it was a qualifications-based RFP, so it wasn't, people weren't bidding on it. And so we, we selected an approach in addition to selecting the qualifications of the firm when we made the selection. And I wasn't here when the, the budget estimate was developed, but I think we learned a lot about what you can get for your money as we went through the process. And, and I think we're, we don't have any concern that we're not getting, that this is not a good investment.
And actually, the next phase will involve them being on-site and doing focus groups and interviews, and you, you all will have an opportunity to participate in at least one of those to, to, you know, provide perspective as well.
So it sounds like it was a pretty much open RFP, to kind of get ideas from different companies. Did you get, can you tell us how many responses you had from the RFP?
We'll get a summary of all of that.
And then one other question. Oh, for the general fund balance, that I think it's five or six million, something like that, does that include any potential repayments of property taxes to hospitals?
No, you might remember that a couple of years ago, we moved all those funds into a, into what we call the general reserve fund. So if we have to make those repayments, we have that isolated elsewhere in the budget.
That's what I thought, but I just couldn't remember for sure. Okay, Dennis.
That was one of the concerns. Those funds were being commingled with our city reserves, so it made our city reserves look more robust than they actually were.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had two, two questions. One, I guess just a general one, maybe just as good, just as well for the general audience, but what is the overall amount of our city budget as far as how many million dollars are we looking at?
59.3 million for all funds.
59.3. And when we're looking at potential rise in property taxes due to new construction, many times one of the incentives that we allow for new construction is to mitigate or with, or waive property tax collection on the city's part for a certain number of years. Does that, does that affect the expected income from property taxes in the community? And what part would you say?
Sure, in, in the, in the short term, of, of course it does, if people aren't paying those taxes. But, but the goal, for example, of the Think Urbana program is, is they receive that incentive that incents them to, you know, build a home in Urbana perhaps. And then when that incentive is phased out and they're paying full property taxes, we're benefiting from that in a way that, in, because they never would have otherwise, we assume, probably built that home in Urbana.
Yeah. And other, other than the Build Urbana program, as far as commercial development, can you comment on that?
I'm trying to think if we have any, or if we're abating property taxes on commercial development.
Oh, okay. Are you talking specifically about TIF?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, I, I suppose you, with, the way I think about TIF is this, in the TIF, we're gathering up all that property tax revenue that would have gone to all of the taxing districts, and we're using it to incentivize development within the TIF. And that growth in property tax revenue comes back to the TIF, but then same thing, it's kind of a delayed gratification sort of thing. At the end of the life of the TIF, then we all, all of the taxing districts benefit from that growth that occurred.
And then, so is it also true that, that the city will sometimes discuss waiving the collection of property taxes for, to incentivize commercial development? That has, it's, it's not necessarily part of the TIF program, but it's part of the incentivization for individual development projects?
It's a, it's a tool.
It's a tool. And it has, it does sometimes come up, is that correct?
I think so.
And it would be probably a limited period of time that that would be allowed?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be, that would, that would somewhat delay the collection of some of the income that we would hope. So we're not really depending upon that in this year's budget, I would assume. Is that right?
Correct.
I see.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions on the budget? Mary Alice.
So I, I did some quick number crunching here on sales tax. So a couple of things. The first one is, is that you had said that, that we are going to have more than the amount that we had projected in fiscal year 2019 for the state and home roll sales tax. In addition, there's been growth, so 3% growth, nearly $100,000 than what we predicted we would have. And it seems to me like we're starting to gather, or based on the change at the Supreme Court in terms of collection of internet tax, that's now starting to trickle down into our budget. Is that correct?
A couple of things related to that. Sales taxes have been looking very good. I update those predictions every single month. The budget was published before I had the information for May, which does not look so good. But also, when, when you talk about the internet sales tax, remote sales tax collection, that actually isn't in the sales tax revenue figures, it's in the use tax revenue.
Right, right.
So that, that also looks good, but that was kind of expected because of that.
But the numbers, I mean, so you said it exceeded the budget. It included, so the use tax included 150,000, right? So approximately quarter of a million dollars more in, I'm going to call use tax and sales tax revenues than what we predicted. And are we, has that been included in terms of our revenue projections? Because I know we didn't increase our revenue, but this is increasing the revenue.
Yes, so, so when you look at the budget book, there's, we show the budget and we show an estimate for the current fiscal year. And the estimate is what we use to roll forward and project fund balance going into next year. So to the extent that we're estimating a higher figure than the budget, that's all kind of baked into the numbers.
So do you know approximately when the use tax for the internet sales, we started receiving that? Because I know when we talked, when that law originally passed, we didn't know when we would start seeing that amount.
Well, it was effective in October, and so generally it takes three months by the time the sales tax is collected by the retailer and remitted to the state and then paid to us, so January. But there was some talk that maybe some of those retailers started paying earlier.
I'm just trying to figure out if we, if we collected 150,000 more than we expected at what time point in the year, right? So what, what is the projection for next year? That would be a better question, I think.
You mean in terms of growth, specifically for use tax?
Yes, use and, yes.
I, I can tell you off the top of my head, the numbers we were projecting for growth in home roll and state sales tax were about 1.75%. Because we expected that to moderate, we think it's likely that sometime in the next year or two, we're going to see a recession. Use tax, I'd have to go back and look at, dig into my notes on that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I had one more. I think it'll be quick. For Elizabeth, in the comparing, going through the budget as we go through it the next couple of weeks and look at the estimate from this year, FY19, compared to proposed, does any of the proposed include any carryover that didn't get spent this year? I can give you a specific example if it'd help.
So, yeah, yeah. Give me your example, but then I'll answer it.
So the example was like, for this year, the budget for bike lanes and side pass was 225,000, because we were doing, I think that was for the Cunningham Avenue share of the IDOT project. So the estimate that we were going to spend this year was 62,000, so maybe we haven't paid for that yet. And then there was back up to 200,000 for next year. Normally, it's about 40, 50,000.
Yeah, so since we have implemented Munis and we have a few more tools to manage our finances, we've also tried to work with the engineers to be more precise about the timing, particularly on capital improvement projects. So it would be common to see that in capital funds, that we just might shift the timing of a project. In the general operating fund, that would be very unusual to see it there.
Okay. But in that case, you're pretty sure that that's probably carryover? It's not some new project I don't know about?
No, I don't think it's a new project you don't know about, but we will be talking about the capital improvement plan on June 3rd.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
We did forget to mention that employees, bargaining unit and non-bargaining unit, will be getting a 2% raise in this proposed budget. If you recalled two years ago, non-bargaining unit employees did not get a raise. Last year it was 1%, so this year it's 2%. And that was also what was negotiated in the contracts.
Thank you. We have with us tonight Library Director Celestia Choat.
And I will be up in one second. I have seven slides for you tonight, five minutes or less, ready to roll. As always, thank you very much for your generous support of the Urbana Free Library. We are grateful for all the time that city staff spend with us, helping us do the things that we couldn't do without them. We are especially reliant upon, well, every single department. So thank you very much for all of that. And you saw those little cuties and 1,000 books before kindergarten. Those are families who are devoted to getting their kids the literacy that they need to succeed in life, and we are super proud to be part of that. And as we were talking about earlier, literacy is a key to helping people succeed. This year's budget has 4.2 million. Expenses are more than that, 4.33 million. We have received different gifts from the Friends and the Foundation and from other donors that we intend to spend. That will be 258,000. The Friends are donating 32,000 for new furniture for the front of the library, the 100-year-old meeting space. We weren't able to purchase that furniture this year, so that's a rollover for us. The Foundation is pledging at least 46,000 for programs and events, including a Pygmalion author to come in and an intern to continue to work on the Chinook collection. The library's- The Library is also budgeting for our library school interns. We have two students each working 10 hours a week to help process the history of the Chinook Air Force Base in our community. Other gifts are totaling $100,000. The city, thank you very much, has budgeted $10,000 so that the library can also do a smaller version of a compensation study, so we can look at our wage scale, see how minimum wage is going to impact that for the next fiscal year, and look at our wages as well for our wonderful employees. Elizabeth mentioned that you might be tired of seeing a certain slide. This is the slide that shows that the vast majority of the library's revenue comes in from property taxes. And it is always of concern to us, when we hear there's a possibility of a freeze of property taxes. We are hopeful that that doesn't come up in the legislature again, but if it does, I encourage you all, for your own reasons as well as our reasons, to let our state government know that it would hurt the library and the local governments to have property taxes frozen. The vast majority of our spending goes to staff, 67% of our budget goes to staff. Materials that people get to check out are just over 10%. And then we have some bigger projects coming up. We have increased our efficiency in a couple of different ways. Thanks to a new boiler that the city funded a couple of years back. Thanks to the donation of the foundation of the library. We have a new chiller that's just been installed. And we've been installing LED lights to replace our old lights. So we are seeing a decrease in utilities costs, and we are happy to be on the city's utility plan, so that we get the best deal in town, which we appreciate as well. So we have an old building, the front of the building was 100 years old this year, and as you can imagine, even with the newer sections being from 1975 and 2005, capital expenditures are a big part of what we do, and we're looking ahead to keep the building in great shape. So we have the chiller being installed. And then we have the newly fixed up and renovated porch, which was completely taken apart and put back together. Each of those projects was $100,000 or more, and paid for by the Urbana Free Library Foundation and the generosity of our community. Big projects this year that we anticipate are the staff parking lot, which was, I can't even tell you how bad it is this past winter, but very large potholes that are deep. I tripped in one the other day, and I knew it was there when I parked there. So we're looking to fix that, some interior painting and spiffing up the building. And then we're looking to partner with the city on the voiceover IP telephone system, if you choose to move ahead with that. In the past two years, with the different city cuts that you have had to make, the library has seen $114,500 come out of the FICA contribution from the city to the library. And we are in a good place in that we have not had to cut ours to the public, and we have not had to cut staff. We are fortunate in that we've been able to find more efficiencies, and we've had a couple of retirements. But as Elizabeth, and as Carol and the mayor were saying, future cuts could impact services being offered to the public. We are focusing on IT and capital expenses in the future. We know that our air handler only has X number of years left, our roof is a certain age, our self-check machines are aging, as well as our copiers, which, I know we've got some photocopiers that are 10 years old, and we're still just helping them limp along. We did replace the furnace in the Weber Building that the property, the library owns across the street. That was a $10,000 investment this year. The good news is it's now rented out, and magic needle alterations, which move from University and Lincoln, is now in our property at Race and Green, and we are absolutely delighted. We also are looking ahead. We are currently doing a community survey. We have the language, sorry, three languages available, if you'd like to do the survey or tell your community members about it. It's going to be a three-year plan. It will help us focus our spending and our outreach efforts and how we do our business. And the last thing, which is not budgetary, but is super fun, and is funded by the Friends of the Urbana Free Library, is summer reading has begun. It's showtime at your library, and the mayor has set some community challenges that's a high bar. So I encourage you all to read, and to encourage your constituents to read as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Dennis.
Not a question, but I just have to commend the library on the excellent music programs that I've been coming to more and more often on a Sunday at 2:00 or whenever.
And those are paid for by the Urbana Free Library Foundation. Thank you for that.
Jared.
Celeste, what's in store for the Urbana Downtown Get Down? Coming up this weekend.
The teen open lab colleagues are going to be there doing some fun things with the, I think it's the Fab Lab as well, so it's a surprise. But Makerspace kinds of things, we're super excited.
Any other questions for Celeste? Bill.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks and congratulations on the new porch and the new fundraising person, what's her name?
Amanda Standrefer.
Amanda. And I know it's tough making cuts, because unlike the city, you don't have a lot of options to raise revenue. Otherwise, you wouldn't be the Urbana Free Library. So I just wanted to say thanks for your efforts in accomplishing that. Thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Any other questions? Thanks, Celeste. Sharice.
How long is the survey going to be online again?
Through the end of Memorial Day, so midnight on the 27th.
Because I would just like to encourage everyone, I did it, I want to encourage everyone, to go online and do the survey. It asks questions about services that you're using, services you're not using. It would be very helpful for the library to have that information.
And if you need a paper copy, we can get you a paper copy.
While Celeste is packing up, I forgot to mention, you each had on your desk a Citizen Serve handout. This is an example of the online services that are now available, that have been implemented in the last couple of years. All right, any unfinished business? None? Reports of the Standing Committee, it would be Dennis Roberts, from the Committee of the Whole.
Right. So I'll be reporting the business that's coming forward to the Urbana City Council from our meeting as the Committee of the Whole. And we have six items. The first one is ordinance number 2019-04-028, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14 through 7, or dash 7, regarding the schedule of fees. And this is for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. That's the fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Discussion?
All right, there was one.
Mary Alice.
So I'm curious, based on the public input, I honestly cannot remember why we put in a fee for $200 for somebody who is not the property owner for the historic application. Somebody could give an update on that? So the reason, the main reason for the change is really to recognize that there's a lot of work that goes into that, and we would make it on par with other applications that come to this body, such as major variances, also at $200 fee, special use permits, also $200 fee, rezonings, for instance. So it really makes it equitable with other kinds of cases. So if it does not have, or excuse me, if an application does have the owner's consent, it stops at the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission. It doesn't come to you. So if you add that element of not having the owner agree with it, there is much more effort put into the analysis and the presentation of the case. So it makes it more equitable with other cases, for sure. So is there a fee for homeowners? No, that would be waived. So the fee structure, as it is currently proposed, keeps a homeowner that agrees with the application, keeps that as a $0 application fee. So it's just if there's going to be the added process of going through council and the added analysis that needs to be done in order to make sure it's a good, it's a good, solid report that we've asked for the fee. So I guess I'm confused. When you said that it's a good, solid report, what is the difference between having the owner approve it and having an outside entity request it? What's the difference in terms of the report? Well, in essence, we need to ensure that we are analyzing the criteria so that if it does go to court, because the property owner, if they don't agree with the nomination, could potentially take it to court, we need to make sure all of our bases are covered in that, in our staff report.
Thank you. Sharice.
Could you give you an example of why somebody would say, "I want XYZ House to be historical whatever, and they don't own the property themselves?"
It's happened, I think, twice in the last four years since I've been here. And both, in both of those instances, I'll only speak of those, in both of those instances, they were in response to a development proposal for that property. So applications were submitted in order to get landmark status. Presumably, then, if it were landmarked, it would make it more difficult to redevelop those sites.
Okay, so anyone can just, like, come to my house and decide that they want to make it a historical landmark?
They could apply for that, yes.
Okay, so they apply for it. Are there special conditions under which, which, I know in some places, you have to, like, keep your house a certain way, it always has to look like, look like, look like Abe Lincoln's house, or whatever. So is that, is that the reason why a person would also say, "No, thank you," or "Don't do that," or?
Correct. So there, if a property is landmarked, and it was referenced earlier, there's a requirement to get certificates of appropriateness for a lot of the exterior work that you'd need to do, or that you'd want to do. So that would mean a homeowner would need to apply for that certificate of appropriateness, make sure that the materials that are being used, for instance, are appropriate to the architecture and to the structure. So it does require a bit extra on a homeowner. We want to encourage that if the homeowner wants to go through that process, but we wanted to at least recognize that an application fee is reasonable, a very small application fee is reasonable in the instance where a property owner is not supportive of the landmark.
Any other questions? Dennis.
Yeah, I'd just like to also contribute to the comments about historic landmarking and what are contested landmarks. And in the past, there was no, there was no opportunity for a person to try to intervene and to protect a home which had historic qualities or design from being demolished by a landlord or an owner. There wasn't a way that, there could be a determination even, or a time period to determine if it was a wise move, or it was useful, or whether the landlord could reconsider. And so the city council, quite a few number of years ago, instituted what they call demolition delay, which allowed anybody who had a desire to submit an application for historic landmarking on a home, 40 days, 42 days, I can't remember what it is, to make their case before the Historic Preservation Commission. And actually, two or three very significant houses in Urbana were saved by, in cases that were contested by the landlord. And if I could remember the names of the, I'm trying to remember, but on, like, 608 East West Elm Street, a very beautiful, large home by a very prominent Urbana businessman. It's on the north side of the street, it's gray, has pillars in front, and it was a Royer home, Royer-designed house, that was becoming sort of derelict, parts of it were falling off, the cornices were breaking. That was, that was landmarked, and the landlord wasn't very pleased about it, but finally agreed, and the landmark stuck. And the house was not only repaired, but still exists today. So these are the cases that come up, and they are contented. And, yeah, thank you. More recently, in our memory, the Zeta Beta Tau sorority house, which was owned by the sorority itself, and they wanted to sell it, or demolish it, or change it. And ultimately, Peter Mulan purchased it, and it is now opened up as a condominium, and a very Beatles, very restored one at that. So at one point, it was under threat of demolition. It was also an important, significant structure designed by Joe Royer.
Okay.
So whether it's fair or not to make a charge for those kinds of nominations, you know, we could consider whether $100 is sufficient, is $200 rather a large, but probably I understand that staff time is involved.
Any other questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes. Thank you, that motion passes.
Okay. Then ordinance, next is ordinance number 12, 2019-05-029, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Article 6, Section 22-91A, it's amendment to food and beverage taxes ordinance. And again, for the committee, I moved approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Discussion? Mary Alice.
So we received information from the city attorney regarding the difference in, difference in charge between products that are made locally and products that are not, in terms of packaged. And he said that we were not able to have different rates, if I remember correctly. So my question is, have staff, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Carol, I know that Jim's not here right now, had staff had an opportunity to look at what Bill had proposed, which was kind of a rebate-style item? We haven't explored that yet. Or maybe Elizabeth has.
I did discuss that with Jim, and he indicated that since it was just, I suppose, another way to accomplish the same end, that at least he expressed to me that his thought was that that would also not be permitted.
No rebate?
Well, it seems like for, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Bill.
For the purposes of this, we would approve it either way, probably. But I'd like to have staff continue to look at it and see if we could offer a separate rebate. I mean, I know we do rebates on sales taxes for economic development incentives and stuff, but, and certainly nationally, there are production tax credits for all sorts of things, but it'd be a little, just, it'd be, what, $10,000 a year or something?
I'd be happy to bring it up with him again, and I think you're correct. We would do, we would approve this ordinance regardless, and that would be done, if we were going to do that, that would be done through some other mechanism.
Okay, we can explore that. Eric.
I just think there's got to be a way, if we believe that locovorian enterprises are worth supporting or incentivizing, that there ought to be a way to do that. There must be a way to do that.
Jared.
Don't forget, we have two Urbana breweries now, not just one.
Bill.
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking was, and I think what Darren was thinking, was anything like the Growlers that were sold from the premises, and the Kegs, I guess, would get the rebate. But I suppose, you know, once you start giving it to people who produce beer, next thing you know, people that produce soap are going to be asking for it. But, you know, maybe we can make a special case for beer.
Well, it does open doors. And again, for the public's sake, this is focused on our packaged liquor tax, which is part of the revenue increases proposed in the budget. So we have a, any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes. That motion passes. Dennis?
Yes. Next ordinance, number 2019-05-030, an ordinance amending Urbana City- amending Urbana City Code, Chapter one, Section one dash ten J, regarding the schedule of fines for certain local traffic code violations for two thousand nineteen. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second it again.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next comes ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash oh five dash zero three one, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-three, Section twenty-three to two eleven. This is parking violation procedures, and for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any discussion?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. We can move on to reports of special committees. Dennis.
You might have noticed this, but the Urbana Sister City Committee program has purchased a display banner, which it would like to take to events that it participates in, but while we're not using it, we've erected it here in the city council chambers, and it highlights the three sister cities that Urbana has and supports. That would be Zumba, Malawi, Haizhou District of Guangzhou City in China, and Tionville, France. And if you have time, take a look at it.
Thank you. Any other reports of special committees?
Reports of officers. Okay. Moving on to new business. We have resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero five dash zero one two R. It's a resolution ratifying a letter of intent for and approving an inter-agreement for redevelopment of the Urbana Landmark Hotel. I do have one member of the public who wished to make comments, and I think I'll do that first, and then we'll go on to the staff report. So, Ilona Matkowski?
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak to the letter of-
Please speak into the microphone.
Oh. Sorry. I'm here to speak to the letter of intent to enter into a redevelopment agreement between the city and the developer for the redevelopment of the landmark hotel. My primary concern is with the preservation of the hotel's historic character and nature, both in its larger forms and smaller parts and details. I believe we have a great opportunity here to restore an iconic Urbana architectural landmark to its former grandeur and beauty, and in the right hands and with the right direction, it can happen. Unfortunately, the hotel's development plan proposes language, or uses language, which I am concerned about. According to this plan, the building's exterior will be reconditioned. This terminology is unfamiliar to me. The hotel is both on the National Register of Historic Places and is a local landmark. In the renovation of historic landmarks, I have heard of restoration, renovation, rehabilitation, but not reconditioning. I would like to know what is exactly meant by this. So, in the agreement between the city and developer, I would like to see strong guarantees that the historic character and details of the hotel will not disappear. I want to see all the fine architectural and decorative details, including the woodwork, interior woodwork, wood floors, chandeliers, and other parts retained and restored in the historic Royer wing, and its interior public spaces decorated in appropriate historic style, not as a cold, modern building. I would not like to see large sheet glass doors or plastic frame windows replacing the historic doors and windows, or plastic sliding applied to any parts of the building. I am particularly concerned about the Jumer wing, which is a non-contributing part of the hotel on the National Register. So, it's not subject to strict review. So, what I would like to say is, I'd like to see the renovation of the building as a great, I see the renovation of the building as a great opportunity to establish a greater stylistic harmony between the Royer and Jumer wings, and to improve the architectural quality and aesthetics of the building's west side, which is a hodgepodge of no real styles at this moment, even though it is the building's main entrance currently. I'd like to see the historic Royer wing, if possible, disattached from the mall, so that its beautifully designed, original front and sides are exposed and used again. I also want to preserve the trees surrounding the parking lot, and the healthy ones within the parking area, and would like to see more green areas introduced in this area instead of more tar to resurface the parking lot. In sum, I would like to ask the city council to introduce strong language that apply, that outlines in detail the city's expectations and guarantees by the developer for the faithful restoration and renovation of the building and its parts. Once a, once the historic character and details of a building are lost due to insensitive renovation, the building's unique character and value are also lost. A sad example is the renovation of the beautiful historic slate, is the removal of the beautiful historic slate roof tiles from the landmark hotel in two thousand twelve and two thousand, in its two thousand twelve and thirteen roof repair. Slate tiles are a fundamental feature of Tudor Revival buildings, which the Royer wing of the hotel was built in. Unfortunately, these highly valuable tiles were replaced by cheap shingles in an extremely poor workmanship, creating leaks all over the building, and the one hundred thousand dollar worth of repairs in the roof that need to be done by the new owner, whoever buys the hotel. So, instead of improving the hotel by, by removing the slate roof, it suffered irreplaceable damage that would require hundreds of thousands or more dollars to reverse, making it very unlikely that it will ever happen. As a second point, the development agreement offers a minimum of five point two million dollars incentive for the developer, with the potential to increase, to increase over time. Has a maximum expense been defined, and what would that be? And finally, I would like to hear more about the specific qualifications of the developer, who is an attorney, and the LLC he represents, and would like to know exactly how do their particular qualifications and experience guarantee the faithful historic renovation of the hotel? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor?
Yes.
So, at this point, I have to recruise myself from further discussion about the renovation, or not, well, not the renovation, but this resolution, and I'll tell you why. Because as a person who is very interested in the future of the hotel, while the hotel's purchase was, it was languishing, and unlikely to occur, as, as most of the people in the neighborhood and in the community felt after prolonged extensions, we were told by community development people that indeed, the extension, the fee to, to continue the extension was not paid, and therefore, it was no longer in play. And at that time, we had people in my neighborhood and in the community at large who expressed a very strong interest in the hotel, and they came to me to talk about it, and we had conversations about what could possibly be done. And the concept that was forwarded at that time was that if the, if the hotel would fail to become a hotel again by some owner, the concept of creating a residential unit for a variety of individual lifestyles and, and pocketbooks, and also converting it into a community arts center was discussed, and I attended those sessions. And having also inquired of the community development department for details about the condition of the hotel, and being at that meeting, I've been told that I have now become, it's become a subject of concern for the community and for the city, that I don't have a free of bias opinion about the future of this sale of the hotel. So, I'm going to recruise myself at the advice of our city attorney. I'm not sure I agree, but I will follow that advice.
Thank you, Dennis.
In order to start discussion, could we have a motion to put this item on? Oh, that's right. Presentation from Brandon Boyce. Sorry. I feel like I've discussed this for thousands of hours.
Because you have.
Because we have.
Good evening. Tonight, council is asked to consider a resolution approving a letter of intent and also a interim agreement with Markson's Affiliates LLC. The letter of intent is non-binding. The interim agreement is binding. The proposed project is a one hundred and twenty-room boutique hotel, a full-service restaurant, bar, functioning conference center and event space, with Hilton Tapestry branding, at a minimum project cost of sixteen point eight million, with a purchase price not to exceed one million dollars, and city support not less than five point two million dollars. The proposed project is outlined in the letter of intent, which has been signed by both parties, and that letter of intent is representative of the culmination of months of negotiation with Mr. Spiridos and other partners in the hotel project as proposed. Again, the letter of intent is a non-binding document. However, it's signed by both parties with the intent of being the blueprint for the drafting and negotiation of a final redevelopment agreement. The interim agreement, which again is separate from the future redevelopment agreement that has yet to be drafted or brought before council, the interim agreement that council is considering tonight would obligate the city and the developer to complete the redevelopment agreement, and for the city council to approve such an agreement consistent with terms of the letter of intent by July nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. If the city were to not approve a redevelopment agreement consistent with those terms in the LOI, it would agree by this interim agreement to share in the earnest money and related costs of the developer up to a maximum of seventy-five thousand dollars. If this resolution is adopted as presented, staff would negotiate a final redevelopment agreement with the developer to be brought for, forward to the city council for formal approval. It will proceed with a third-party review of the development proposal agreement and related financial statements by S.B. Friedman Development Advisors, who, as you recall, were involved in the third-party review of another proposal brought forward two years ago. In addition, the city staff will proceed with working with Brenda Paytek to update the hotel market study, again, that was last updated a couple of years ago. Greater detail on the team that the developer is working with, the proposal, the financials, would all be forthcoming. Staff is targeting a date of June twenty-fourth for the committee of the whole meeting, at which all of this information will be presented publicly. This proposal is the result of literally hundreds of hours of staff time engaging potential buyers and developers over the last four years. Staff is convinced that Markson's Affiliates LLC and their prospective project partners have the appropriate experience and resources to accomplish the project as proposed. Prior analysis of redevelopment scenarios for this site have consistently shown that a boutique, full-service hotel with an active conference and event center, especially a branded one, is the highest and best use for this site. And such a use is the only use that staff has identified or received serious proposals from qualified developers for, that would generate sufficient tax revenues to cover what has always come to us and, and through staff analysis revealed is an extraordinary cost for quality renovation of this important historic structure. The proposed project would be the most significant reinvestment in the property since nineteen eighty-three, over thirty-five years, and would result in the highest-quality hotel product in the entire Champaign-Urbana market. A fully-activated hotel in the heart of our downtown would provide what we know is already highly demanded meeting and conference space and event space. It would be a first and very significant step in the transfer, transformation of the full nine-block area of Lincoln Square, which is consistent with council priority number one. It would promote connectivity via EMCOR, which the city's making a major investment in, connecting directly along Green Street, one mile from the doorstep of the hotel to the front door of the Student Union in the heart of campus, and as well, and also lends itself to future connections, such as to Carl along the future Kickaboo Rail Trail. Staff recommends approval of this resolution, letter of intent, and interim agreement, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Brandon. We'll start this way and work our way around. Jared.
Brandon, what are, can you just outline real quick, I know we've discussed them, but just remind me what the developers' obligations are in the interim agreement?
Sure. They are outlined in the memo, under the summary of the interim agreement. The developer would be required to maintain the hotel under contract at a sale price not greater than one million, and would also be obligated to continue good-faith effort negotiations with the city for the redevelopment agreement drafting process. They would also be obligated to provide, as is contemplated in the letter of intent, a variety of information to staff and to our third-party consultants, so we can complete our review that we know is necessary for councils to review it.
Thank you.
Bill.
Yep. So, this-
It would be a first and very significant step in the transformation of the full nine-block area of Lincoln Square, which is consistent with council priority number one. It would promote connectivity via MCOR, which the city's making a major investment in, connecting directly along Green Street, one mile from the doorstep of the hotel to the front door of the Student Union in the heart of campus. And as well, and also lends itself to future connections such as to Carl along the future Kickaboo Rail Trail. Staff recommends approval of this resolution, letter of intent and interim agreement, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Brandon. We'll start this way and work our way around. Jared?
Brandon, can you just outline real quick? I know we've discussed them, but just remind me what the developers' obligations are in the interim agreement?
They are outlined in the memo under the summary of the interim agreement. The developer would be required to maintain the hotel under contract at a sale price not greater than $1 million and would also be obligated to continue good-faith effort negotiations with the city for the redevelopment agreement drafting process. They would also be obligated to provide, as is contemplated in the letter of intent, a variety of information to staff and to our third-party consultants so we can complete our review that we know is necessary for councils to review it.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yep. So this is the interim agreement, and we would get the final agreement to look at June 24th, you're thinking.
Yeah.
Is there anything in your early discussions with them that would indicate that they would be interested in getting rid of the landmarking or getting around historic preservation? I mean, aren't they going to be using that as for historic income tax credits?
Yes. To the contrary, we've never heard a remark about not wanting to maintain this as a historic and also a unique property. We do understand that the developer is planning very seriously to pursue historic, federal historic tax credits. So that means they presumably would want to do nothing to endanger its federal landmark status. And likewise, you know, we've been clear that it's also a local landmark and explained that there are provisions under the code that certain improvements will require a certificate of appropriateness and review by the historic preservation. There's nothing intended to be put into this agreement that would change the zoning ordinance and existing rules and regulations associated with landmark properties and the review that is necessary for permits.
Okay. And then on the $5.2 million, I know we were briefed on the different ways that we would be, that we would recover that over time. My photographic memory wasn't working very good, and I don't know how much you can tell us. We don't have anything in writing, but was the total length of that about 10 years, the recovery period?
Yes.
So it made up, there were several taxes that went into that, probably the hotel motel tax is one of the big ones and the boutique tax. Do you know what the percentage on the boutique tax is estimated to be?
It's fairly close to 50/58 and between the two. And I can give you a little more detail because the reason we used a 10-year timeframe is based on the assumption that, we know the revenues can, will fully cover the costs here, but there may be additional costs associated with how the city gets that money. So if we do a bond issuance, we want to ensure that that revenue includes the costs of that bond issuance as well. So 10-year period is, would be the term of the bond. And so we anticipate that not only would those new revenues cover the direct expense of the principal and interest of that bond, but also we incorporated a 20% or 120% debt coverage ratio, meaning for a, for $5.2 million investment would cost the city roughly $6.5 million as a general obligation bond, which means...
That's total with interest over the 10 years?
Yeah, very roughly. But, and also very roughly for that scenario, we would be projecting $7.8 million in revenue from the sources you just described, hotel motel tax and TIF property taxes.
Okay. And then, do you know what the room percentage of the boutique tax is estimated to be? Would it be an additional 2%, additional 3%, 7%? I forgot.
I think we used a conservative scenario around 2% for these projections. The city's intent is to utilize the boutique hotel motel tax that would be created by council under a separate action under the city's home rule authority and intended only to impact a hotel either in this location or of this specific type. Because as we said several times, it will be a unique product in our market. That allows this project to contribute additional revenues back to ensure that the city's fully covered. In addition, though, to just covering the expenses, you know, we made assumptions about that not all of that hotel motel tax would be new to the city. So we discounted that revenue stream by 15%, only calling 85% of it new. And then we also ran a sensitivity analysis, and we looked at negative scenarios such as the property being assessed lower than we would have expected. If we had a tax rate reduction, which is sort of an interesting consequence of the city prevailing in the Carl lawsuit, is if there's a big increase in assessed value, tax rates would likely go down across all the taxing bodies, which actually then has a negative impact on these cash flow projections for our TIF district, even though, you know, lower tax rates community-wide would probably be celebrated. On the hotel motel tax side, we looked at what would be the impact of less new revenue, meaning if we were, should have been more conservative in what we called new revenue, as well as just low performance of the hotel as well. And we actually combined all of those scenarios into a worst-case scenario and to ensure that even if all those things went wrong, the city would still at least break even on the revenues coming from the project and the cost of any bond issuance. And one of the buffering factors is our ability to add additional boutique hotel motel tax in the future if needed. So the city would reserve that ability over the course of that 10 years to adjust as necessary.
Do you know if there's any statutory limit on the maximum boutique hotel tax we can charge?
I don't believe there is. However, we would be more concerned about, you know, just sort of a market condition if we went, I think around 7% or higher is where we would be becoming a leader in the state.
Yeah. And then people would, yeah, then like Gina said, people, why would people go there if they're paying extra tax? So the $5.2 million says with potential to increase subject to underwriting. So is that underwriting and insurance for us against catastrophe or something?
Yeah. I mean, it potentially goes both ways, both the conclusion of the developer's diligence, what their pro forma shows at the end here. There's still a chance that the project could look better from their side in terms of what their final construction numbers come in looking like, what their projections as they continue to talk about the details of their proposal. Those numbers could improve, and our intention is to offer a minimum level of support if the numbers get worse, or I mean, if there's more revenues, we're in a position to provide additional incentive.
So maybe I'm confused about what the underwriting means, or is it just the overall financial picture, or is it some sort of insurance?
I mean, again, I think it can go both ways from, for either party, but specifically for the city, it's going to have to do with our ability to issue bonds in the amount we specified at the cost that we're projecting.
So the cost of the issuance of the bonds. As far as like if we were to issue the bonds at the end of the project once it's developed and God forbid, you know, there's a fire or something two or three years later. I think I asked about that in our briefing. Have you had a chance to figure out if, what we could do in that case? Because we wouldn't have any property to recover or anything. Could we insure it somehow?
Yes. I mean, that, we need to have a more detailed internal conversation on that, but I do have that comment, and I don't have a good answer for you tonight. But yes, the city does have the ability to take out insurance policies on, you know, important revenue sources. That, in that scenario, the city, yeah, is really only at risk if it occurs after the hotel has fully opened, because that is the only point at which the city will provide incentive on this project is after the construction project is fully complete and the Hilton Tapestry brand is in place.
Okay. And I think that's, I'm sure somebody else will ask what experience the other, the developer has with other projects.
Sharice?
I just want to clarify a little, a few things because I'm sure there are people who are going to have questions and may be a bit confused. Brandon, does the city own the Landmark Hotel?
Thank you for asking. No, the city does not own the hotel. The owner's name is Zhao Zhenyuan, XJ, and he's owned it for several years now.
So the city is just acting as a facilitator regarding the sale of this hotel?
We are not directly facilitating the sale. We are positioning ourselves to assist in a major redevelopment and a very important property in the heart of our downtown upon sale.
Okay. So, but as far as the city getting any monies, like directly for the sale of this hotel, they get none?
The city is not directly supporting the sale of the hotel. We are seeking to support the project.
The developing of the hotel.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we don't receive any money from the sale of the hotel?
Right. That's what I wanted to clarify, because people often think that the city does own Lincoln Square as well as the Landmark Hotel, and I've had to clarify on several occasions that the city does not own that property. So I just wanted to be crystal clear so that there's no confusion as to, our interest is based on revenue stimulated from the business of the hotel. And I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Eric, did you have questions?
I thought I heard a couple of times reference to recondition in the letter or reconditioning, but I can't find that word. My computer can't find that word in the document in front of us. Could you help clarify that?
First of all, any change to the exterior would likely fall under the, and I believe even the non-contributing portion will still likely need to be reviewed to see if a certificate of appropriateness is necessary because the entire building is, and the mall are jointly on the National Register of Historic Places, and the entire building is locally landmarked. So again, there's no attempt here. The language of this letter of intent is not preventing the city from exercising its full authority of appropriate review for certificates of appropriateness in the future. In addition, the letter of intent is intended to capture the spirit of the agreement. So there is not really any specific meaning that was being imbued into the term reconditioned. You could easily substitute the term rehabilitated, renovated, you know, you can choose a word. Here's the key thing that we're aware of at this point, is that we don't anticipate any significant change to the general structural form of the building or, you know, a very intensive, I guess in the range of things, reconstruction of the exterior, you know? We expect it to be, you know, what's there to be improved, what's there to meet the requirements of a certificate of appropriateness, and ultimately to meet the standards of a Hilton Hotel. What that specifically will look like, it's unclear at this point.
Yeah. But as far as I could find out, that word wasn't even there anyway.
It's actually in the letter of intent.
Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
It's one G.
Oh, the find utility in my computer didn't find it. Maybe I misspelled it.
It's in a PDF, so that might be inhibiting.
Ah, maybe. Maybe that's it. Oh, if it's, oh, if it's an image rather than, okay, got it. Okay. Now, I'll ask the question that Bill said somebody might ask about the record of the developer, because I also couldn't really find information about Markson or Spiratos. I Googled srgpe.com because that was the URL that his email came from, and I have a screen in front of me that says "coming soon." So perhaps you can give background on that.
Well, it's important to understand, we'll start with a popular misconception. I don't think any council members have this misconception, but Hilton is not buying the hotel, okay? Hilton wasn't buying the hotel previously. This is a proposal by a private hotel financer and developer, and there is a team of separate companies and investors, hotel operators and possibly additional partners who will come together to make this project happen. It's an organic and unique process, a convening of these stakeholders, principals of different companies coming together. Markson's Affiliates LLC is a LLC intended to buy the property and at least initially execute the redevelopment agreement with. There may be changes to the LLC structure before we get to the place of a redevelopment agreement. So I wouldn't put undue emphasis on the, this specific LLC. What's important is that this LLC is the instrument of a group of developers and investors who've expressed interest in the property. If you search for Mr. Spiratos's name, as was pointed out in the newspaper, he does have a lot of direct hotel experience. I think even one of the historic renovation projects he had been involved with was mentioned in the news gazette this past Friday. However, we were requested that at this time, at this stage, that we not reveal the identities and names and also the resumes of all the different project partners involved. However, staff clearly intends to bring that forward in a very detailed way as we approach the next step in this process, and also to engage a third-party consultant to review the backgrounds and the assumptions of going into this project.
I, I'm in. In spite of the fact that we have a president who's a real estate developer.
He's not one of the partners. Thank goodness. Mary Alice.
I assume he's not one of the partners.
Well, actually, I should, Mary Alice.
So bear with me, I'm trying to break down the numbers here. I know you're shocked.
All right.
Okay. So right now, it says that, well, first, let me start off with the basic question of why are we saying a minimum of $5.2 million? So why is that phrase in there? If you could help me understand that.
The minimum of $5.2 is pegged to the minimum project cost of 16.8 million, you know? So that's the, those are the minimums. The developer would be held to a standard of a minimum investment, and for that minimum investment, we would be expecting a, to provide a minimum level of incentive to that project. If they are able to demonstrate to us greater revenues as they improve their diligence here, it may potentially justify additional city support for the project.
So what is the maximum?
Well, in theory, I mean, the maximum is the number that puts the city at risk. And right now, $5.2 at a minimum project cost of 16.8, using the revenue projections that we have, we don't believe the city would be at risk. But you start changing any of those variables, the city could be at risk and staff could be changing its recommendation.
So if I could just elaborate on that a little bit, just so that folks that are listening will understand that, in case they didn't pick up on it, that the way this deal is being put together from the city's perspective is that we will not go out of pocket to support the development. So all of the revenues that Brandon described, which will be generated by the project, will pay back whatever obligations that we have to the incentive that we put in. So when Brandon talks about putting us at risk, it's putting us at risk of going out of pocket. So we've built in these various safeguards that give us comfort that we're not at that tipping point yet, and we'll continue to maintain that. That's, that is a posture we've maintained throughout all the conversations that we've had with developers, and we've been consistent with this developer on that point as well.
So Jim's not here, so I can do a hypothetical. He doesn't like when I do hypotheticals. So right now, what's the number, 16.4 that we're saying they?
8.
Six, thank you. 16.8 is the minimum cost of the full project, and our minimum is 5.2. If they come back with better projections of how much they're going to be able to, how many rooms are going to be able to fill, and how much the rooms are going to cost and so forth, which would then increase the amount of boutique motel hotel tax that we would be able to recuperate. And then they say, well, you know, your minimum, we really want $7 million. Okay? So I'm speaking towards the fact that if we decide not to go through with it, we're obligating ourselves to 75, a maximum of $75,000. So I'm curious where the balancing act is here, right? So if we're saying the minimum is 5.2, and we're not putting a maximum on there in terms of this letter of intent, are we able to back away from this deal and not pay $75,000 if they come back and say, well, we think these are our projections and you should be giving us $7 million? Do you see where I'm going here?
Yes. The $75,000 is not a, intended to be a 100% reimbursement of the developer's earnest money or related fees. In fact, we are quite confident they've, have and are expending much more than that. So we're kind of in this together. This is a jumping off point for both the city and the developer to spend some additional money on diligence. So I think we... So I think we sort of both have something to lose at this point and neither party is entering into this with the intent of, you know, surprising the other later in the negotiation. And that's really the intent behind the letter of intent, is to really spell out the expectations on behalf of both sides. So we are going to create a redevelopment agreement that conforms to those requirements and continue to negotiate in good faith to close the gap on this deal and make it happen.
I would like to add something to clarify because I -- and I think this is important, so I'm glad your question is teasing it out, which is the projections that the developer is making are about the operation of the hotel and the revenues that will be thrown off by the hotel. We are taking those and making our own projections about the taxes that will then flow from that. And so it's not that they go, "Here's your new set of projections, here's your new number." So we are really very much in control of how we choose to analyze what they give us in terms of revenue.
We're hiring an outside consultant to do that analysis, correct?
Yes.
So I guess I get hung up a little bit with this phrase "good faith," right? Because legalese is what is good faith. So if we do in good faith and they come back and say, "Well, we really think you can contribute 7,000 -- 7 million," I wish it was 7,000, $7 million, based on our projections, our consultants come back and say, "No, you're putting yourself at risk, really 6 million is the cap." If we have that scenario, have we met good faith and say, "This is the max that we can go to based on what our consultants are telling us?" And if they say, "No, we really can't move forward with this project and will you give us 7 million"? Where does that good faith come in?
I'm going to take a stab at that and then you can join in. We have been exchanging a lot of information with this development team and we know where they're coming from and they know where we're coming from. So the idea that there's going to be this kind of very dramatic increase in any of the projections at this point is not expected. And we just don't think that's going to happen. That is not the rapport that we have developed with these folks in the exchange of information. We've been very candid with them, they've been very candid with us. So I just don't see that happening. Good faith has gotten us to this point and if there's a deal to be completed, good faith will get us all the way there. That's all I can tell you.
And to add to that, just very briefly, the level of candor extends to the city and this will be extended to our consultants, having some direct insight into what the conversation is happening with the lender at the table for this project and also the inclusion of a brand. The brand is involved in the review of the projections for it as well. So those are additional parties that are going to be relying jointly on this same set of numbers and it's another reason why we wouldn't expect them to just change dramatically.
Okay, so I'm trying to get to the final. Let's just pretend that the 5.2 million is the amount that we're going to be handing over to them. So what percentage of that is coming from TIF funds? Because you had mentioned in your memo that a large percentage would be coming from TIF funds of eligible expenses.
For the property tax.
It says most renovation expected expenses, expected for this project would be considered eligible for reimbursements via the tax increment financing. So it sounds to me like some of that 5.2 is going to be paid out of TIF. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, the coverage for the property taxes, it may all be paid from TIF actually when it comes down to how we actually implement this. But the intent behind the sentence you read is it was really referring to that 16.8 million dollar, the total project. How much of that total project is considered eligible from a TIF perspective? And if this was new construction, there's a lot of new construction, components of new construction that are not TIF-eligible. But renovations, the vast majority of expenses for your renovation project of an existing historic building in particular, are going to be eligible. So there will not be a shortage of eligible expenses on a project of this nature.
So does that mean that we potentially would not be taking out a bond for the 5.2? If -- no, see, that's where I'm confused here.
I mean, yeah.
Sorry, Elizabeth.
In a perfect world, we wouldn't be, but it seems like the most likely scenario for us.
So we would need the 5.2 at a specific point in time after the hotel is completed and branded and gets their certificate of occupancy, but those revenues are going to come in over a long period of time. So yes, we need the bond to get the money upfront that will be repaid from the revenues over a period of time.
And the revenues include TIF?
Yes.
Money that comes in. So you're going to have TIF money that comes in and the extra tax that comes in and then the additional just general hotel motel tax that'd come in from those rooms. So those are the three sources that would pay that. What is, what did we say, 6. something overall?
TIF property.
Yeah. 6.5 million overall over 10 years. Is that correct?
Yeah, but we also include a debt coverage ratio, so we're really looking more at a stream of about 7.8 million. We want to be well-covered for those expenses.
Yeah, what Brandon's saying is we over -- essentially overestimated the revenues required relative to what we actually expect and that's a safety net.
Okay, one last question on money and I apologize. I know other people have questions. So the last bit is that the sales tax exemption, is there any estimate on how much that would be? I'm trying to come to a total dollar amount the city is basically contributing here.
Sales tax exemption, it varies.
It's state sales tax.
Rough estimate.
It's on new construction materials. The city is giving up very little in that regard because there aren't, even within our market, not a lot of places to buy building materials.
So less than 5,000, more than 100,000. I mean, I'm just looking for really round numbers here.
Yeah.
I gave you a broad range there.
It might be a total of 100,000 in sales tax exemption.
Okay, so 100,000 or less? Is that fair?
Yeah, but again, the vast majority of that is not city. So it, yeah, it could be measured in the thousands of what the city might be foregoing for the sales tax exemption.
And if the 7.8 million include that?
Does it? No, because it's an exemption. It's effectively a reduction of the cost of the initial project. So we have, the developer has to finance less and we, there's less reason for the city to provide incentive.
Okay, I guess my last question, I lied, I had one more question. It has to do with projects. Usually when people do a project, they form an LLC so that they have limited liability in terms of just that single project, right? So I understand that there's a multitude of people who could potentially be investors and be part of that LLC. There is a primary person that the city has been dealing with. Are there any specific projects that the city can share with the council and with the community that maybe people could look at in general of an example, something that this individual has put together with other investors?
I'm not prepared to do that right now. We would seek to provide you with many examples of the work of this team as we move forward. However, again, I do believe that the newspaper listed at least one project that Sam Spiratos has worked on. But at this point, I don't want to try to represent the developer's resume here to you on the fly. I'd rather wait until we can get their participation in presenting to you all and to the public, their full team.
Okay. Can you ask my question? Shall we go back around? Jared, any questions? Bill?
I thought of one other. I don't know if it's, it's probably not important to have in the letter of intent or this part of the agreement, but maybe in the final one, under the developer responsibilities, talking about maintaining the project as a Hilton Tapestry branded hotel for 10 years. If they -- or the potential to sell it, I mean, they could keep the hotel and still lose the brand by not maintaining their various responsibilities to the brand, you know? They have to put so much aside for improvements or for replacing materials over time and things like that. So that seems like that would put them in default of the agreement and so there would be some way to work that out and try to bring them back into compliance. So I guess in the final agreement, is that something that is going to be, you know, one of the things that, one of the potentials to consider and offer remedies for that?
So just to restate, and Ken Beth, our special counsel for TIF agreements is here and he might have some thoughts on this, but I just want to make sure I understand your question. You're describing a scenario wherein the developer opens the hotel, receives incentives, and then some, at some point during the operation of the hotel, fails to maintain the Hilton flag?
Yeah.
Ken, would you like to answer that or address that? You'll need to come to the microphone, please.
You're correct that the developer would be in default if that occurred and the city and the developer would need to work together to bring the developer out of default. If that could not occur, the agreement would normally provide that the incentives would fail, in which case maybe with this particular agreement, since the money is upfront, there'd have to be some repayment or something to the city.
Like a clawback?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mary Alice.
So I just said, curious, I'm not sure who can answer this question. When you talk about a certificate of appropriateness, does that include the interior as well as the exterior?
No, it does not include the interior. You can turn and look at Lori and ask the question.
And so do we have any guarantees that the interior will retain its historic character? I don't believe we do.
No, we don't.
We do not. Do you know what the intention is of the developer?
I can only speak in general terms right now. I think when they're here in June, you can ask for more specifics, but I think they want to preserve the character of the most interesting spaces, but it's by no means going to be a restoration of all interior elements to their original condition.
Okay, all right, thank you. Eric?
As someone who experienced the interior of the hotel decades ago, it was rather dismal. So I hope it's not restored to that.
Jared?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move approval of resolution number 2019-05-012R, resolution ratifying a letter of intent for and approving an interim agreement for redevelopment. This would be the redevelopment for the Bana Lake Mark Hotel for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank staff for all the time you put into this and for providing some of the analysis that you'd done two years ago on the alternatives. I know one thing that made this possible is the owner decided to be more reasonable on what he thought the property was worth and that also opened up potential alternatives, even though he didn't have anything specific. I think it's important to know that those are out there and you've looked at them and come up with what you think is the best and have provided numbers to support that. So just comparing this to the two-year ago project that was proposed two years ago, it looks to me like we get about the same thing for not much more than half the price. I mean, I think we were talking about nine and a half million last time, plus interest, plus a longer payback period. So it seems like this group at least is optimistic about putting together a more efficient renovation, basically. So I think, you know, considering the alternatives and the cost of even demolition, if it came to that, would be four to five million to get an empty parking lot. So I, you know, I don't know if this will be the last development agreement that ever happens on this hotel, probably not, because there was one, I think, 30 years ago and I think, I don't know if there was one when it was built, but I know there have been at least a couple. And I think maybe the parking deck downtown came about because of one of the hotel development agreements. I don't remember for sure. But yeah, maybe 20 years from now, they'll be doing the same thing, but hopefully there will be some intervening time where it's actually generating revenue. And in the meantime, anything will be better than what it's been the last five years.
Jared?
I just wanted to voice just that I'm assuming Brandon, Carol, and Diane that we're not going to go radio silence on this between now and a month from now when we see them at the committee, the whole meeting, that we're going to continue to operate as we have been, trying to keep us informed as new developments come in and, you know, the sooner the better so we can get comments and start understanding what we're going to be looking at so we don't have to look at it that night and decide that night. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, Bill?
I did mention that last time when we were looking at it, I don't know if I said it in public in talking to development staff and stuff, that my limit was like four to five million. So we're on the edge of that, so I'm just warning you. Don't let them go much higher, if any, so. Thanks.
Well, Mary Alice.
I also want to thank the staff and everybody's time. I know that there have been hundreds, if not thousands, of hours spent on this hotel over the many, many years that this has been up for conversation. I know I push really hard on the numbers and the reason I do that is because I think we need to be as transparent as possible with our community in terms of this is a lot of money that we're spending. So I would like to encourage staff and when we get a final agreement to have those numbers be as transparent as possible. I am in support of this. I agree with Bill that it is kind of pushing the limits, but right now, I think that this looks better than anything else I've seen. So I mean, I'm in support of getting this hotel back to its former glory and I hope that this project will lead us down that path.
Eric?
So I'd like to express my appreciation, if it hasn't already been done before, by moving approval of the resolution ratifying the letter of intent.
We do have a, we do have a motion.
You know, I'm getting pretty old.
I think it's, will the clerk please call the law?
See your moment. Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Hersi.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. And last item on the agenda are mayoral appointments, reappointments to boards and commissions. We're coming up on June 30th when many board and commission terms end and what we've done is we typically ask people who are serving if they wish to continue and so these are appointments, reappointments. And I'm going to read their names individually because I think it's important to recognize the volunteers who do donate many hours of service on our various commissions. For the plant commission, Dustin Allred, for term ending June 30th, 2020. For the arts and culture commission, Barbara Hedlund, term ending June 30th, 2022. Janelle Orkerton, term ending June 30th, 2022. Bicycle and pedestrian advisory commission, actually is our assistant city engineer, our co-city engineer Craig Schonkweiler, on the term ending June 30th, 2022. Building safety code board of appeals, Scott Kunkel, June 30th, 2024. Civil services commission, Tom Betts and Tracy Nally, for June 30th, 2022. Design review board, Matt Cho, Scott Kunkel, Mary Pat McGuire, all terms ending the June 30th, 2022. Historic preservation commission, Alice Novak. Human relations commission, Stacy Burnett. Plant commission, Jane Billman and Lou Hopkins. Property maintenance board of appeals, Dan Harmon. Property Maintenance Board of Appeals, Dan Harmon. Sustainability Advisory Commission, Matty Garbach. And Urbana Free Library Board, Sharice Hersi, Barbara Jones, Beth Scheid. Everyone but Matty's terms end June 30th, 22. Matty's is June 30th, 2020. So I recommend, I ask that you approve these appointments.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. And again, thank you very much to the residents of Urbana who, who serve on these boards and donate their time and expertise to this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. With no further business before this meeting, or this body, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.